... closed session items, we did have some things to talk about. It took longer than expected. Can you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Spanish translation?
We have Vivian Rodriguez with us tonight. Vivian, we do not have Vivian Rodriguez with us tonight. We will go to... Yeah, thank you.
We have headsets for the hearing impaired. Introductions, popclamations, presentations, or recognitions, Dr. Sarvas.
We'll make sure we have translation here in a moment. But let me go ahead since we have our team here ready to present. We had an exciting computer camp this summer called Beyond the Fast Typewriter. And we asked secondary gate coordinator Sandy Robertson and students to come and tell us about it. Sandy?
Good evening. Now, do we have a clicker or do I just... Is it like radio on "Shoot it anywhere"? Shoot any... good. Shoot anywhere, what permission? Good evening, board members and school personnel. I have with me Nina Downey and Noah Goodman, and they were two of our computer campers. We actually had computer training for teachers for two days, and then we had two days, the 12th and 13th, for our kids. It was sponsored jointly by the Secondary District Gate Office and the District Advisory Council, which is a group of parents who does the fundraising for us. The instructors were Dr. Jonathan Marjoram-Lays. He's an assistant professor, as you can see. I spent a week with him last summer at UCSB in technology training. And it was that experience that I had with him that convinced me we needed to bring him to work both with teachers and students. And Mary Lourdes Silva is a doctoral student in educational technology. So the two of them teamed for the kids, and Dr. Layes was here just for the teachers. This shows you the agenda for the teachers. I've broken the first rule of PowerPoint presentations by putting too much text on your... And Dr. Layes would give me an F for that. But the reason I did it is because if anybody wants to have this PowerPoint presentation and go into more detail and look up some of these links at your leisure and get a little bit more idea of how sophisticated the materials and activities that the instructors brought to us, then you would have that for you. So I'll be happy to email that to anybody who would like to see it. So we had a very busy day. I just want to mention Tweets is bermashaved because this was effective writing 140 or fewer characters. He actually, the instructor, took a photo of our mission statement and challenged the teachers to cut it down to 140 characters. And that was a great exercise in summarizing. And that is something that all of the instructors who were with us said that they would take back to the classroom is using technology. Work on summarization.
We want to see our mission statement in bermashaved signs.
I'm going to have to ask the teachers to send it to me. Okay, I'll have them for that, too. But this is 48 words and 262 characters. So you can see what a challenge it was to get it down to 140 characters. Because we all know that every single word there is absolutely crucial, is it not? On Thursday, we had the computer camp for kids, and they worked on short stories. We did a lot of computer-assisted pre-writing activities. We reviewed plot structure, which is in the standards for English Language Arts at all grade levels. They worked collaboratively, and the kids will tell you a little bit more about what they did using sharing documents to mark text, respond to one another's writing, and share text on Google Docs. So that was really wonderful. And then they wrote a script Thursday afternoon into Friday morning. And Friday, they videotaped it, and then they used the editing tools to make it into a movie. And then we watched the movies at the end. What was amazing to me was to see just the video that was taken, and we watched some of it. And then to see the end result when the kids went back to use the computer tools to make it into a really lively movie. It was really amazing. Here's Chris, Nick, Jack, and Ethan working together. We had seven 7th graders, three 9th graders, three 8th graders, and one 10th grader. When we set out the registration, I hoped to have, and that amounted to 14 kids, I hoped to have a full class of 30 or 32. However, because of the timing of the camp, it was the last week of vacation before kids came back and other commitments, we didn't get a full house. So I went to Santa Barbara Junior High. There was an avid summer school program going on. And went into every classroom, there were four there, and handed out the registration forms. And I recruited so that we ended up, at the time I did that, we had about six kids. So we got a few more from that avid camp. So you can see how intent the kids were. This was what it looked like all day long, from 9:00 to 3:00 with a short lunch break. The kids were intent. Nobody was off task, ever. Here's Gabe and Mac and Colette. I want to say word about this. Gabe is not really scowling, he's just being his charming self. Gabe worked with his sister Colette. We let the kids during the project self-select their groups because it was a short two days. Next year, when we run it differently and we've learned some things, we might do some other grouping strategies. But these were siblings that worked together. And Max is not a sibling, although I think by the time they were finished, he wanted to be in the family with Colette and Gabe. This is Mary, working with... Here's Nina in the middle, and Noah, and Cambria, working on their video. Daniel, Dominic, and Nair collaborating. There's Dr. Layes, working with the kids. Now, I sent out a questionnaire to all of the kids, and a few responded. But these, because I have Nina and Noah with us, I'd like them to tell you in their own words to answer the question, what was the most important skill you learned in computer camp?
The most important thing I learned was how to outline using Word. Because right now I'm working on writing a novel, and the outline feature has really helped me to plan out the novel and to work there and make it be more believable. And I'll also use it to put school notes on a computer for our organization.
I think the most important skill I learned in the two-day camp was Word Outline, because I think that I will have the opportunity to use it when writing essays, and that it will help in the process.
Now, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the outline feature of Word, but it's not just a simple outline as we learned with Roman numeral 1, 2, and 3. It's a deeply sophisticated organizational and kind of idea-generating feature. So the kids really did appreciate that. Then I asked them, how do you think what you learned will be used for school and personal projects?
I will definitely use the outlining feature to convert my notes to Word and have it be easier to organize. And I will also, in online contests that I do, use it to know the amounts of words. Plus, in this, it needed to be 50 words or less. So I actually used the Word Count feature to find out how many words I was using.
I will use what I learned for school and personal projects by remembering what I learned to use in Microsoft Office Word, as well as iPhoto and iMovie. Because there will come a time when my teachers will ask me to do something on the computer that involves the use of pictures, movies, and essays.
One thing that impressed me about Dr. Layes' vision for this kind of a camp was that... And we have all heard this criticism that technology is taking kids away from each other, away from families, and they're being isolated like this. His goal was to figure out ways to help kids use technology in collaborative ways, whether they're in the same room as they were during the days or working on a collaborative project at home using Google Docs and other features. And would you recommend the camp to other students, and why?
I would definitely recommend this camp to other students because it was helpful in teaching me about iMovie, outlining, track changes, writing, Mac, Word Count, and also Google Docs. It was informational, but it was also very fun.
I would recommend this camp to other students because I had a lot of fun and learned many things that will help me in the future. I also think that anyone who does this camp will benefit positively from it. The camp has a wonderful learning environment for students of all ages.
Great, thank you very much. Now, comments from teachers. Again, I've broken the... I'm just going to summarize this, but again, I've left it up here if you want to look at it later. All of the teachers mentioned Google Docs, tweeting the idea for helping students learn to summarize, applying the outlining feature, insert comment for peer revisions. We also looked at websites for teachers on Project Rubric and Rubistar so teachers could create rubrics for all of their assignments. One teacher, I guess that's going to be next. Further, they would like further training on using the outline functions to bring kids into a computer lab and teach them how to use Google Docs and be interactive with teachers as well. Again, mentioning using the more sophisticated features of Word, Google Docs. They'd like a lot more collaboration time with colleagues using Google Docs. I recommend to all teachers to stay on the cutting edge and forefront of tech for one's own and students' benefits. And what they'd like to do next is to develop technology competency standards for our students in this district, grades 3 through 12. That would be great, all the teachers said. The only... this one is much more in detail and gives an example of how one particular social studies teacher said that he and another one, another teacher who went to almost every one of our professional development trainings this summer, and we offered many of them. He said this was the best, that he and his social studies colleague were looking for certain ways to interact with students using technology, and this was exactly what they needed. And this from a French teacher. So you've heard from a... on these comments now, an English teacher, a social studies teacher, a French teacher, and science teacher comments are up here as well. So again, just more praise. Thank you for the opportunity to participate. And this is from a student. Thank you for allowing me to attend the camp. I had a lot of fun writing the story and making it into a movie. Thank you for letting me go to the camp at no cost. We offered scholarships for those students who needed it. One last piece that you should know is that in the registration packet that the students completed, they pledged to teach one thing they learned during this computer camp to another student during the year. Then they'll make an appointment with me, and I will go wherever they are, where we can have a computer, and they will show me what they taught the other student. The new student will demonstrate what they've learned. And this will be a way, we hope, of growing the camp for next year. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Parker for her attendance at the computer camp for a few minutes and for the mini-sessions that you attended, including the fundamentals of rhetoric. So thanks for your support, and all of the board's support. It was a great experience. If you'd like to ask a question, I'm sure the kids would be happy to answer. Anything else?
Ms. Parker?
Well, I'll just chime in because I did get to sneak out of the fundamentals of rhetoric over to the computer camp because I'd already heard the teachers saying how fabulous it was for them. And the kids looked like they were having a great time. And I got to peek over everybody's shoulder and see the superheroes and the work that they were doing. So I'd love to see the movies at some point, so...
I can get those for you.
Well, thank you very much, and I'm glad you enjoyed your summer, or that week of it, anyway. I hope you enjoy the rest, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do have a group of teachers who would like to discuss developing competency standards with Ms. Swawski at some point. Okay.
Right.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Herr, and I do have one other recognition. I'd like Kirsten Escobedo to come up to the podium for just a moment. Board, I'm pleased to introduce our Director of Special Education for Elementary Programs, Kirsten Escobedo. You've known her as our Program Specialist for Elementary Programs. Well, she is now Director. Kirsten has been in the district since 1995, joining... Since joining the district, she's served as a teacher, a department chair, assistant principal intern, site program specialist, and extended-year summer school coordinator. And now she's our Director. Kirsten is a graduate of UC Santa Barbara and Cal State Northridge, and Cal Lutheran, where she earned a master's degree. And we're delighted to have you onboard in this position, Kirsten.
Thank you, thank you.
Board?
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I'm looking forward to this new opportunity. And as a teacher and a program specialist, one of my personal goals was to really work with families and build trust and develop relationships and be collaborative. So I'm excited to have this new leadership role so I can continue to lead our staff in that direction.
All I know is I met one teacher opening to that school, and the first thing he says was how wonderful you're going to be in your position. So I won't tell you who he was, but... Of course, by saying "he," that's probably a good idea.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. And a couple of you know that in the special ed presentation we had, where we had all of our special ed people together this last Thursday, we had Carrie Mills introduce herself as the Executive Director. With one difference, she said, "I'm the one who's going to stay."
And we're waiting for two more months, Carrie. Yeah, okay.
We're all pleased to hear that. Well, shall I go on with the superintendent's report? Well, we're off and running in a new school year, and we have a lot of excitement about the new school year. And that was obvious as we went around to the schools this last week, where everyone was in training or various meetings to prepare lessons and plan for the year. Yesterday was the first year of school for most of our campuses. It was a relatively quiet first day. Unless you were in a school office, it was flooded with last-minute arrivals. And we had staff and students in place and instruction going on from the get-go. So I was pleased to see that. We've been posting back-to-school images. In fact, we have a few here from our website, and I'd like to share some of them with you if we're ready to go. Barbara, maybe you can tell us what we're looking at here.
You know, at the end of the last school year, we posted graduation pictures, so it just seemed normal that we should post some back-to-school pictures. And there were some common threads that I saw. Certainly, registration was a big one that was going on at several of the schools, or all of the schools. Textbooks, and lockers, cubbies, ID photos, PE clothes. And backpacks. This is Costco's donation of 400 backpacks. There were a lot of families throughout the districts going along with their students. And this little guy was a little unhappy that I didn't get his shoes that lit up. A lot of friends. And checking out the new classroom, which I thought was great kindergarten at Roosevelt. And a lot of determination. The student that you see here, hopefully you had a chance to catch the article in the paper about her, little Ashley, who, this was her first year in kindergarten. She had been a very healthy pre-K student at Franklin and unfortunately had some major, major medical problems. And her idea of success was she wanted to be in kindergarten. She was going to be there for the first day, and she made it, so...
Good, thank you, Barbara. Well, as you can imagine, we're closely monitoring our enrollment numbers. So we have the sites go out, do classroom counts each day, get those numbers to us. They vary at different sites, and as soon as we think they're accurate, then we will be posting them. As of today, our elementary district has 4,470 students, not including the charter schools. And we currently have, then, 27 students less than last October C-bids. So we will wait until this next week to see whether that number holds. It may be that some people didn't realize that school started this week. I can't imagine. We've been all over the place. But that sometimes happens. Our elementary enrollment is slightly less than the number last year at this point in time. Accurate secondary district enrollment numbers are not yet available. And as soon as they are, we'll be getting them to you and releasing them. Well, there are a number of news items I need to comment on because they all have bearing on the district. The state just reported the number of students passing the California High School exit exam. The information is shown on the table, on the side table, if anyone's interested. And board members, you have it here in the dais. As you can see, for the class of 2010, the state had a 94.5% passing rate for all students. Now, that means that students from the time they took the exit exam in 10th grade through their senior year, by the end of their senior year, 94.5% of the students had passed the exit exam. By comparison, in our secondary district, we had a 97% passing rate. So we asked Dr. Davis Hayden to get those numbers so we could do a direct comparison. And as you look down the list, you can see that most of our numbers are higher, particularly for the passing rate for Latinos. The state rate for Latino students was 91.6, almost 92%. While our district had a passing rate of 94.8, almost 95%. So we're pleased that we're ahead of the state in that as well. Another news item. Last week, a local news source erroneously reported that 70% of our Latino students drop out of school. Well, that is grossly inaccurate. In fact, our dropout rate for Latino students is 11.8%, almost 12%, which is 1/3 of the rate of Latino students across the state. We're happy that we're far lower than the state rate. That said, we think that 11.8% dropout rate is too high, and we're working to reduce it. But reporting it as 70% is grossly incorrect, and it's an affront to the... all the Latino students who have worked hard and who have stayed in school and who have graduated from high school. State winners in round two of the federal race-to-the-top competition were announced this morning. And California sadly was not among the 10 states awarded federal funds for the competition. We anticipated this when our districts passed on competing for the state pass-through funds at the beginning of this summer. And those 10 states are listed in the newspaper. I don't know whether California even had a chance, but California made a try, and a number of the districts in California went along. Our district did not, and a number of other districts in round two sat out as well. And of course, that may have had an effect as well. And as you've heard in the news, there's been a massive recall of eggs across the country due to a salmonella outbreak. Our district's nutrition services program uses pasteurized USDA eggs. The recall does not apply to the eggs that we use. And I'd be... I'm sure you're happy to hear that our students were not at risk of salmonella poisoning. Upcoming news. This Thursday at 11:00 a.m., we will hold a sign unveiling at San Marcos High School recognizing the generosity of Marborg Industries. You remember, we had Mario here, Mario Borgatello here, a graduate of one of our schools and president of Marborg Industries, who will be on hand this Thursday. The company was awarded, was already awarded, a one-year, $80,000 contract by us for waste hauling and recycling services at San Marcos High, Galleta Valley Junior High, and Dos Pueblos High School. Then in April, aware of the ongoing impact of the state budget crisis on school districts, Marborg Industries stepped forward with a commitment to provide the hauling and recycling services for the entire year 2010-11 that it had already successfully bid on at no charge. And of course, we're very thankful to Marborg Industries. The donation represents a savings of $80,000 to the district unrestricted general fund. And we're very grateful for this contribution, which is part of Marborg's Save a Teacher program. And we are in the midst of scheduling a board candidate meeting. The first round dates did not work out for the candidates, so we're hoping to have a meeting date confirmed as soon as possible. We have all four board candidates with us here tonight. We have Kate Parker. And if you'll put your hand up so that we can recognize you. We have Dean Nevens, who's a board candidate, Lauren Mason, board candidate, and Sonia Monique Limon. Did I get that right, Monique? It's officially Sonia, right? Okay. Next round, we'll get the camera on you so that people can see who you are. And maybe the four of you should get together so we can agree upon a date here tonight before you leave. Well, the board brief. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and news items on the school district. A copy of the August 13 Board Brief is on display in the reception area. And in the last Board Brief, we included fact sheets on the upcoming Bond Measures Q for the secondary district and Measure R for the elementary district. The fact sheets are posted on the district's website as well. Finally, sadly, this morning, there was an accident when a big, red truck lost control near Highway 154 and State Street and struck a private residence. Among the lives lost was Haciel Telles. Haciel was a 3rd grader at Franklin Elementary School. Principal Casey Kilgore said, "Haciel was a wonderful boy with a beautiful smile and a caring personality. I have a vivid memory of Haciel as a kindergarten with a smile larger than his body." Excuse me. Casey Kilgore said, "He was so smart and was eager to learn. He had a question about everything and always wanted to know more." Well, this evening, Franklin parents are being notified. We have a triage team assembled for the school, and tomorrow counseling will be available for school, students, parents, and members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas. That is hard news for all of us, so our prayers go out to the family. C2, board comments and correspondence? Mrs. Deacon?
I know a number of us were there, but I would just like to mention the Harding celebration and the commencement of our wonderful partnership with UCSB. We heard mariachi students sing and play, and comments from UCSB's dean, Jane Close Connolly, and Principal Sally Kingston. It was wonderful to see how many people from the neighborhood showed out. And I didn't wear my new Harding sweatshirt, but I got one. And when the weather turns, you'll see me in it.
I'd just like to say that several things. I went to two special ed training classes, one at Dos Pueblos, well, both at Dos Pueblos. No, one at Galleta Valley and one at Dos Pueblos. And the one at Galleta Valley, and we may hear about this later, but it was all of the special ed faculty and teachers and leadership. And what an optimistic day. All I can tell you is that the optimism and the excitement was... I just hope it continues on for an awful long time. It was a wonderful day. Went to the beach to Autism Day. And the autism group, families, and some of our high school dons. Again, it was a wonderful day to see the children who were afraid of the water end up surfing. You know, but you see them progress from putting their toe in the water to actually getting on a surfboard, going out and coming back in, all full of smiles, wanting to know when they can go back on again. Went to a Read 180 class at Adam School, and just fortunately, it was for the instructors. And they were talking about their trip to Florida, which I found interesting, that I happened to pop in when they were sharing what they learned and how they're going to use material they learned at those sessions in Florida. And I was glad I was there because it did help me understand what was going on. Had the pleasure of going to Washington School and looking at that final project in summer of high school and looking at that final project a couple million dollars later. And they both look absolutely fantastic, so David, great job, long, long time. They've been around longer than my term on the board, so... And I know that you worked very hard and your team worked very hard. I appreciate it. What I saw at the first day of school, the places I went, was the calmness, just like you mentioned. Everything... you know, San Pablo High School is just a beautiful campus. And the calmness in the hallways and the calmness at Washington and watching the kids. It was like they'd been there all the time. So maybe it was just they're scared the first day and it's going to get different. But it was a great opening day, so I appreciate it. And I did see Lois Capps at Washington, and she was there celebrating back-to-school. And she was very excited, wanted to make sure that she went back to Washington to let us know she made a vote for teachers. So we'll hear more about that later, I'm sure. Okay, anybody else?
Mrs. Parker?
The one thing that I wanted to add was that a number of us had the opportunity to go to the Latino Achievement Summit that was focusing on issues at McKinley, Dos Pueblos, and at San Pablo Junior High School. It was a long, two-day process and incredibly valuable. So I'm so glad that we had that opportunity. I'm looking forward to seeing progress come out of that meeting.
Mrs. Cudero?
I also wanted to report, I don't know... I know there were a couple of others of the board members who were there as well, that about a week and a half ago, maybe, we attended a talk by Father Gregory Boyle, who is the founder of Homeboy Industries. I'm not sure that there was a dry eye in that, in his audience during some of the stories that he recounted, but it was a tremendous... the stories that he recounted, but it was a tremendous learning experience. He has, I, I think really addressed the sort of humanity that often gets overlooked in a lot of the young people who are coming out of prison and coming out of gangs. And I had an opportunity to buy his new book and have been reading it and it's every bit as fascinating and heartwarming as his talks were, but I was also really impressed to see a couple of former students who on their own had attended the lecture and were quite excited about hearing him. So it was a wonderful opportunity for a lot of the, the young people as well.
Announcement of closed session action. Item B one, student discipline, you'll, will be voting on that as item E two on the agenda. B two, public employment, employee appointment. It was moved by Codero, seconded by Heron, that we extend the employment agreement of Mrs. Sawaski for an additional year, ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, with the understanding that during the term of the agreement, modifications may take place regarding duties and responsibilities of the position. The motion passed five to zero. Under B three, congratulations, Robin. We do appreciate everything that you do. B three, public employee appointment. It was moved by Parker, seconded by Deacon, that we ratify the decision to hire Marlon Sumter from Modesto for the position of Director of Student Services. Passed four to zero with one abstention, Dr. Noel. Do you want to make any comment on that, Dr. Sarvas? And Mr. Sumter?
No, we believe Mr. Sumter will start on September twenty and we're anxious to get him to the district. As soon as he does come, I'll be introducing him to you, board, and we've got plenty for him to do.
That's for sure. C four, public comments.
We have six public comments.
We have six public comments and you'll call them by name and please help by coming up to the podium just prior to your time on the podium.
And there's, there's a few in here that didn't identify the item, but I'm, I'm assuming that all want to speak on public comments, so I'm going to start with John McKinney, followed by Dean Nevins, followed by Kenneth Locke.
Members of the school board, good evening. I'm John McKinney, proud parent of an eighth grader returning to that gem of a small middle school at the Santa Barbara Open Alternative School. It's truly a gem and it's truly small, just twenty-five students, a mixture of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And one and only one teacher is assigned to that middle school that emphasizes the whole child as well as having a active outdoors program and environmental studies program. Last fall, over the strenuous objection of parents, the successful teacher who headed up that middle school was replaced by a former elementary school teacher who left the profession for two years to practice the art of massage therapy. More than six months pregnant, she took over the classroom and in the opinion of parents, failed to communicate or effectively teach this age group or to embrace the mission and standard practices of this school of choice. She replaced David Archer, who had distinguished himself for two years at the school for his outstanding teaching and reviving its once-flagging middle school program. She caused no end of chaos, insecurity, and level of uncertainty as she pushed her way in, first full-time, then part-time. There was much frustration and distraction from the education of the children in the class as she continually changed her schedule, forcing everyone to adapt to her. It was only when she finally left school on maternity leave that the classroom settled in and began the school year with their original teacher. Again, over parents' protest to the principal and to senior district officials, she returned to campus in late spring with similar social and academic disruption and similar poor results. Parents protested some more and she left campus before years again. Parents and students alike were assured that the successful teacher, David Archer, would be the teacher again this year. Instead, the unsuccessful teacher was reassigned just seventy-two hours before this term began. Once again, yesterday, we're back to school with a teacher no parent wants. Every parent of a returning student, that would be the-
Thirty seconds?
Seventh, eighth graders in this case, has expressed their concerns to senior district officials and to the principal. All our emails, all our pleas have been ignored. The only reason senior district officials can offer for this nonsense is that the unsuccessful teacher has more teachers' union seniority than the excellent one. Parents have made clear their choice of teachers at every turn and have been disregarded. While we, parents contemplate more aggressive action, we have a question for this board and for the school district. Do parents have any input at all about who teaches our children? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Dean Nevins, followed by Kenneth Locke, followed by David Diaz.
Board, Dr. Sarvas and staff, my name is Dean Nevins and I am a candidate for a school board, the Santa Barbara School Board. I just want to introduce myself. I'm going to do this only once because after this, I have to, I have a class usually right now, so normally I'm in class, but today's a short week. I, I'm a product of public schools, like you said, like many of you. I've got a bachelor's degree from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, a master's degree from UCSB in robotics, and a PhD in geological science specializing in computational geochemistry. I am currently a sitting board member at Galita and one of the things I'm hoping to bring to this board is our strong program and some of the ways we've done our elementary program. I think we're moving in the same direction here and I think I can really add a lot to this current board by having the experience of doing those same kinds of things. So I'm bringing a lot of experience in a lot of elementary programs as well as experience working with other age groups. At City College, I am the president-elect of the Academic Senate. I'm also the department chair of computer science, so I'm heavily, heavily involved in a leadership role at Santa Barbara City College as well as working with Galita Union. So it's a pleasure. I've, I know most of you already and I certainly hope to work with you after November, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nevins. Kenneth Locke, followed by Sherri, whoops, followed by Sherri Ray, followed by David Daniel Diaz.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I spoke before the city. I haven't been in town that much this summer, just kind of getting back and what I've been working on, I've been working on my website a little bit with tennis, tennis science, the Renaissance of tennis, if you Google that. I started a page on there called the, the intelligent version of tennis. And as I mentioned to the city council, that historically, we've possibly assumed that tennis, the version we've been playing, has been the intelligent version, but I'm sorry to say it hasn't been. And the reasons why it has, it's not the intelligent version is based on the fact that it promotes the use of one arm, you know, it's a stronger arm. It's kind of working with the strengths, not the weaknesses, kind of thing, but the, and then the idea was competition. And then, and then we've actually incorporated an economy around someone who was successful, again, with one arm and competition. And I think I mentioned that we're, I'm hopeful that we're going to, our educational system's going to be reformed into the twenty-first century into the interdisciplinary spec, perspective. Now, what I, what I bring to tennis is the, the understanding of how the, just the physics of the exercise in relation to the metaphysics and zero competition, no competition at all. I have to explain that competition is just a, it's, it's not actually needed. But then with that understanding of, of a completeness in relation to the exercise, in relation to the physical metaphysical relationship, we can understand it as complete knowledge in relation to the complete exercise. That's the whole basis of the mind-body integration. For the twenty-first century, it's actually going to be really important for the children to actually build a relationship with reality where they understand their minds and bodies as integrated and actually tennis is going to be one of the means that they're going to be able to use. To have, to become intelligent, you have to actually become intelligent through intelligent means. I'm sorry to say that currently, right now, the tennis, as the kids are being taught right now, is again, the not intelligent version and they're not going to be able to reflect their intelligence through means that aren't intelligent. I make myself available to-
Thirty seconds?
To the, to, as I mentioned, kind of historically, I think it's kind of a no-brainer. I'm hoping that possibly the athletic director, say if you have one, can make, get in contact with me and entertain some of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Sherri Ray, followed by David Daniel Diaz.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. On Sunday night, I spent about an hour filling out school registration forms, copying my property tax statement and utility bill and reading about the district's forty pages of documents, including thirteen selected pages of the California State Education Code. One particular section of the code concerning alternative education caught my eye. It reads, "California state law authorizes all school districts to provide the, for alternative schools. Education Code five eight five zero zero defines alternative school as a school or separate class group within a school which is operated in a manner designed to, A, maximize the opportunity for students to develop the positive values of self-reliance, initiative, kindness, spontaneity, resourcefulness, courage, creativity, responsibility, and joy. Recognize that the best learning takes place when the student learns because of his or her desire to learn. Maintain a learning situation maximizing student self-motivation and encouraging the student in his or her own time to follow his or her own interests. These interests may be conceived by him or her totally and independently or may result in whole or in part from a presentation by his or her teachers of choice and learning projects. Maximize the opportunity for teachers, parents, and students to cooperatively develop the learning process and its subject matter. This opportunity should be a continuous, permanent process. Subject is of special interest to my family because we fully support the alternative education approach offered by our school of choice for the past nine years at Open Alternative School. This school has more than thirty years of history, always attracting healthy numbers of well-educated parents, many of them who are teachers at other schools in the district and who are empowered by law to choose a different approach for their children's education. But in the past few years, and most especially this one, the disturbing, obvious trend has been for the Santa Barbara School District to blunt and minimize the differences in the alternative approach to make it conform to every other school by quantifying every lesson, every moment regarding teachers and students as interchangeable parts. Please note that the state education code spoke of joy, creativity, independence, and cooperation as positive values. Please remember that these values are of great importance to our children-
Thirty seconds?
-the members of our school community, our larger community, and they must be upheld and respected, most especially in making appropriate teacher assignments for this unique school that has more than established itself in this community with its valuable alternative approach to education. Failure to grasp and implement this alternative model is not only an affront to the school's long list of supporters, it is a violation of state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. David Daniel Diaz, followed by Lauren Mason.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Santa Barbara. Well, this is unusual, no special need advocacy today. Wow, this is quite a test. I want to thank the board and the school district. My youngest just graduated, youngest of three in June, and did a great job. The school district here is one of the best in the country and I know it. And a lot of parent participation is great. My kids contributed a lot of fundraisers, jogathongs and all different types at Harding and Adams Elementary School and even with Joanne Keynes over here, the principal at La Cumbre, the jogathon there. My kids were very successful and they usually won grand prize in first place, but their enthusiasm to help the community was great. And the reason I am here today is, I've been researching on past, on behalf of businesses and vendors, the parking lot issues like over at Santa Barbara High, the county ball has an exclusive, which is nice, and then you have the flea market on Saturday, but other people want to lease parking lots at the elementary schools and seeing how money's a tight thing, why haven't we opened this up? And tomorrow, I'll give a piece of paper for my doctor indicating I'm not supposed to write or type, so this is a Freedom of Information Act request, a FOIA request, to have access to any contracts that have been written out with the flea market people or the county ball vendor to see why they get such an exclusive and the rest of the community does not and thus prohibiting the school from benefiting financially from leasing the parking spaces during events in our community. So I'll be by the office tomorrow and Mr. Superintendent, and give you a copy of my doctor's paper indicating I'm not supposed to write or type anymore. So on that note, thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
And my email is also on my request slip if there's any communication that's needed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Lauren Mason?
Last month, the principals of our high schools requested board approval to raise the student-to-teacher ratio for ninth grade math classes, and there was discussion to raise it from twenty to one to twenty-two to one to twenty-five to one and even to twenty-eight to one for advanced ninth grade math classes. At that board meeting, no decision was made and staff was directed to research measure H and its intent. I was ready to speak at the last board meeting on August tenth, but pulled my speaker card when I was told by two board members that measure H would not allow ninth grade math classes to go above twenty to twenty-two to one. Eric Smith further commented at the beginning of the regular session that it was clearer that ninth grade math classes should stay at twenty to twenty-two to one. And then I went back and I looked at measure H and the arguments in support of it, signed by Lois Capps, Salud Carvajal, Dale Francisco, Dale Buggay, and Peter McDonald, and it's very clear the language in there states twenty to one. Why then does my son's ninth grade geometry class have thirty-eight students? And I will repeat, thirty-eight students. I called Sean Carey, the Dos Pueblos High School principal, and when I inquired about this, I was told that under Eric Smith's direction, above-grade level math classes could be increased. Geometry is the recommended ninth grade math class for four of the six four-year plans at Dos Pueblos High School. College prep, the rigorous plan, IB, and engineering. When I asked Sean Carey about the student-to-teacher ratio of other math classes, she stated that she wasn't sure of the ratios, so I asked, "Do they have twenty to twenty-two to one?" She said, "I'm not sure." I said, "Should I take that as they're over twenty to twenty-two to one?" She didn't answer. Is this board aware of this? As a voter and property owner who pays property taxes, I would like an explanation. I am making a formal request for the ninth grade math class student-to-teacher ratio for all classes at all of the high schools. I would hate to see this district do anything that could jeopardize the important passage of measures Q and R. I hope that there is a good explanation for why this has occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. That concludes public comment.
I presume there'll be a communication on that topic?
We'll be happy to get, we'll be happy to get back to Mr. Mason.
Thank you. And to the board, too. Acceptance of donations, C five.
Move to accept with gratitude.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Consent agenda, item D two has been withdrawn. Are there others that want to be withdrawn permanently, but others want to be withdrawn for later discussion?
And board should note that you have an additional page showing cost breakdown on D six. D six, that should be on the dais there.
Others to be talked about later? Dr. Noel?
Did I hear correctly? D two's been, then D four?
Yes. Yes.
Do you have a motion to approve the balance?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. E one, action item, notice of public hearing and approval of Resolution ten slash eleven dash oh eight regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for Cleveland Elementary School and the Santa Barbara Community Academy, and this is a public hearing. Do we have any comments, public comments?
No, we do not.
Then let's close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from?
Just that, we have made our eight-week timing. After eight weeks of school, the, um, you have to take the, the survey, actually, of the schools, and you'll be seeing the rest of the schools eight weeks from now or before. So, um, we found that every, every single student had every single book, and we also have a new textbook, online, web-based inventory system that has been difficult to get, not difficult, it, it's just something new. And, um, it's great because everyone, every library tech in the district office, we can see how many books we have anywhere at any time. So this is very helpful.
Do you have a motion?
Move to that, to, uh, that the Board, or I, I'm sorry, I would like to move that the Board adopt Resolution ten slash eleven dash oh eight stating that there is sufficiency of instructional materials for Cleveland School and the Santa Barbara Community Academy for the school year two thousand ten, eleven.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. E two, approval of Board action on student discipline case number, um, we'll start with oh-nine slash ten dash forty-two.
In case oh-nine slash ten dash forty-two, move to approve the, uh, recommendations of the hearing panel for a one-school-year suspended expulsion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously.
In case oh-nine slash ten slash forty-nine, uh, move to approve the, uh, parents' request for supplemental hearing.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Going to the conference agenda, item F one, report on Westside Neighborhood Grant.
Associate Superintendent Robin Swawsky will make a quick comment on this, and then we have Joanne Caines making a presentation.
Okay, and, and all I really want to say is that we originally, as you can see on the agenda, had Emilio Handel as well as, um, Joanne Caines, because they are both schools that are part of the Westside Neighborhood Project, as is Harding Partnership School, so University Partnership School. And you've already heard from Dr. Kingston about some of their projects. So Joanne Caines will talk about Lacombra tonight, and then Emilio Handel will come back at a later time to talk about specifically those projects that are going on at McKinley School. And we'll continue with this because it's very exciting and a wonderful community project. Joanne?
Yes, good evening. A pleasure to be here on the second day of school. And I was told I was going to be given five minutes to be shared with Emilio, so I'm happy to hog all five of those minutes, um, for this-
Start the timer.
For this exciting, uh, project, and it's actually been one that's been in the making for a number of years, Lacombra's vision, uh, to become more than just a junior high school, but to really serve the Westside community. And I'm going to be coming back to the Board with more details, but I wanted to give you the short overview, um, of the grant that we have received, which is in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Here are the main features, um, of the project, um, and I'd just like to, um, go through them really quickly. Uh, first and foremost, our goal is student achievement, but not just for Lacombra students, but to support students pre-K through twelve. So there will be academic support, um, at Lacombra, four evenings a week, from five to seven, supporting students from pre-K all the way through twelfth grade. And that support will be in the form of teacher tutors, um, moving around clockwise. Um, you know, on the, on the West Side, um, in order to get our students there, we wanted to bring our families in, because it is a family event. So we're going to be offering job training for parents, and, um, my motives are sort of, um, the district motives. Uh, every year, we struggle for, um, adults to work in our, uh, nutrition services, um, for temporary custodians. So, um, in a partnership with Santa Barbara City College, um, we will be, um, actually offering training programs, including the Safe Serve Certificates Program through City College. In other words, we're developing employment for our Westside parents into the school district and the community at large. Um, last year, I talked to you about PK, Parent Institute for Quality Education, and that will be repeated again, but our parents have asked for Part Two, which doesn't really exist. Um, so we'll be developing, uh, Part Two, um, a curriculum for it, for our parents to come in, give them more information about college readiness, um, get them on to CaliforniaColleges.edu, get their children registered so that they can track college readiness, um, through high school. Since we want something for everybody, um, we will have the very first Westside Family Chorus. And, um, we have a lot of people that like to express themselves through song, and so this will be a chance for, um, both youth and parents, um, and we hope to actually bring the Westside Family Chorus here to the Board at a later date. There will also be technology training for parents and students. That involves a keyboarding, data entry, um, internet exploration, to really, um, give the computer literacy. And actually, as part of the grant, um, we are purchasing fifty netbooks with, um, the, uh, external CD/DVD and a printer, um, that we will be checking out to families like textbooks with a very strict contract and conditions for use to get the technology into the homes, um, for our, for our families. We'll also be mentoring our feeder elementaries, and, um, with transportation provided through this grant, um, our students will actually be going out to our feeder elementaries, uh, weekly, and taking on a few students, helping them with work, and mentoring them, um, since they so idolize the older children. We have received previously, um, some funding for our healthy lifestyles, activities, including funding for, um, machines and equipment for our weight room. This will further extend this into the evening with personal trainers for adults, um, in our weight room. Our library will stay open until seven PM four evenings a week, and we're currently working with the City of Santa Barbara to hire public, um, library librarians who will come in and give us that tie to the public library that is not available on the West Side. Um, also, research facilities will be available in the library, and we're hoping that, uh, students and families can actually come to Lacombra and check out books from the public library and have them delivered. So, we would be sort of that satellite, uh, area for the public library. In a partnership, and all these partnerships are coming back to the Board with MOUs, with Casa Esperanza, um, they are going to be, uh, recruiting, training, and case-managing a, um, family resource coach. Um, and I'm sure the Board is all familiar with Casa Esperanza and the amazing job that they do. And there will be a family resource coach at Lacombra, um, four days a week, from two to seven, to serve our families in all of the needs that they have. The family resource coaches, you walk in there and say, you know, this is my need, and they basically pick up the phone, they're a walking Chris Directory, and really have the connections to not just say, go here or go there, but to actually make the connections for our families. We will also be having parent involvement nights, um, that involves our teachers and, of course, um, the community. We'll also be able to increase the activities in our current ACES program, um, because there's never enough funding for all of the activities that students want after school. So, in a nutshell, did I, did I make my time?
Board, we are thrilled with Joanne's Kane, Joanne Caines' ability to solicit and head up new projects and programs, you know? Most principals faced with the task of attending to the instructional program are quickly overwhelmed with these additional programs. Joanne has made a commitment to make her school the center of that community, and I, it's just amazing, her ability to, to spin and take on additional responsibilities in addition to the instructional program.
Thank you, and, you know, our goal has really been, um, it, we accept the fact that our families trust our schools. So if they trust our schools, um, we should be bringing programs into the school. And again, this is not part of the instructional day, but it will so impact the instructional day and the achievement not only of our students, but our feeder students, our students going on to high school, and also, um, the economic well-being of the West Side.
And Ms. Caines, we see that your student enrollment numbers are up as well.
Oh, my goodness. What an understatement. Eric thinks I'm going to embarrass him here, but I won't. Um, yes, Lacombra, uh, has come, uh, has an enrollment, uh, five hundred and thirty-seven, uh, actual bodies, uh, which is a growth of fifty students this year over last year.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just, well, first of all, I want to, um, applaud this, uh, array of programs that are going to be being offered in, uh, the evening and after school, and I think your, your comment that it will really, uh, serve the, the whole Westside community is a very valid one, and I really think that it kind of hearkens back to days when the schools were kind of the hub of the, of the neighborhood. I was just wondering, when are all of these after-school and evening programs scheduled to begin?
October.
October, okay.
Right, October, and I'm going to be coming back to the Board. And, you know, part of what's really exciting is, for example, we're going to be offering a carpentry woodshop for our, uh, parents, and all of the items that they make in the evening, including sand and water tables, wooden puzzles, chairs and benches, will all go to our feeder elementaries and into the Westside community. So, it's, you know, it'll be a chance for our parents to really give back to the schools and the community, to benefit the West Side.
Others?
Well, I mean, I, I think we could all chime in and say this is just a wonderful project, and I'm looking forward to hearing how it ties together with what's going on with McKinley and Harding, because I know that the three principals are working very hard together to make sure, um, that this is aligned, um, and that, um, you know, it's wonderful, because I know that it's based on the Harlem Children's Zone project in New York, and I, I just, it's great that we can pilot that in sort of a small scale here, so.
Right, and the collaborative is the Westside Children's Zone, and, uh, it is. The McKinley and Harding programs really focus on, um, the earlier, the zero-to-five population, but, you know, honestly, if we wait for that to work its way up, uh, we'll all be retired by then. So, you know, our thought was to not only push up, but also to push down. And so, um, it's really, it's a, it is a collaborative among the three schools, and we are working together.
Dr. Noel?
Well, I, I just think particularly, the one feature that rings big bells for me is having your peop, your students mentor at the, uh, elementary. Uh, we, we need to bridge that gap so much, and that's a terrific idea.
Absolutely.
Since everyone's, uh, decided to chime in here, let me say that I, I, your comment about building trust and how schools are a place to trust and, and that brings parents in, um, I think is really right on the mark, because that's what we need, and I can only imagine how many more parents will be involved with all of these programs, and I also applaud you for providing employment for more people, because certainly, these programs are going to be staffed, and, uh, I guess my only question is, when do you open Lacombra Bed and Breakfast? Because it sounds like you've covered all faces except that one.
Thank you very much, Mrs.
As soon as Eric buys property or erects dormitories, um, we'd be happy to do that. And, and again, this is just a small snippet, um, sort of an overview, there's so much more to it, um, and, um, I'll be coming back with the MOUs for Board approval, but in two and a half minutes, this was-
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll go to F two. Process for identifying priorities for projects continued upon approval of bond measures Q and R.
Well, Board, this is an important discussion. Uh, we have put Measures Q and R on the ballot, uh, we're going to the community at the time that we discussed this in June, uh, we didn't, we wanted to be careful about mentioning specific projects and not overcommitting ourselves. Uh, at the same time, I think it's very important that schools know that they will get something out of this, and that there's something in it for them. Uh, you see the various attachments, I'll let Dave Het Young speak to these attachments, uh, you see the same thing that he gave you in a Board brief item on those projects that are shovel-ready, and those projects that may need to go to, uh, DSA. You also see an update on the projects that we discussed in June. Now, this is all headed by a discussion of what kind of priorities we would place on selection of these projects, and a little later in our, in our discussion tonight, um, I would recommend that, uh, you ask Mr. Het Young to go, uh, work with each of the principals and identify one critical project on their campus, and I think we already know what some of them are. Uh, Dave, would you like to say more about the materials that the Board has in front of them? I know it's really a board discussion, so that we can give Board direction on where to go with this.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas. I want to, first of all, make sure that everyone understood that the, uh, that on the cover memo, the, uh, these are recommended categories for establishing priorities. This is just Mr. Smith and I giving some recommendations. This hasn't been discussed with Board members, these haven't been suggested by Board members, so I want to make sure that when, when the public sees this Board item, that they don't think that the Board has already established priorities. These are just our recommendations at the start, uh, to get the discussion going. As Dr. Sarvas said, there, there's, uh, there's some recommendations, uh, there, there's some information on projects that, uh, are quote shovel-ready, have DSA approval, there's many other projects that, that have, uh, a partial design, but not a complete design, and of course, the, the list is a little bit different than the last time you saw it, because some things that you couldn't do with bond funds that were on there with suggestions, like, uh, classroom furniture, that wasn't a permanent fixture in the classroom, uh, no longer appears on that list. So, uh, with that, I'll ask Doctor, or excuse me, Mr. Heron, where he wants, does he want me to be quiet now so the Board can start, or does he have any other information?
We do have some public, we do have some public comments, so maybe we'll hear the public comment, and then maybe that'll fit into the rest of the discussion.
We have one public comment at this point. Okay. David Shapiro.
I want to thank you. I'm, I'm David Shapiro. I'm speaking on behalf of Parents for Excellence in Public Schools, we've spoken before you before, and other issues. Um, our group has, uh, formed a health, or indoor air quality health task force, to which I'm, I'm a physician, I'm part of that, and I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Jeanette Hope, who's a, uh, environmental medicine, fellowship-trained environmental medicine specialist, who's also in our physician-led task force. Um, we also have a professor of environmental science who has, uh, a background in environmental and indoor air quality testing, uh, and our group has been very concerned about the issue of, uh, indoor, uh, air quality in the portable classrooms, and Measures Q and R were a good opportunity to bring this issue up, but I'm really bringing this issue up for two reasons. One is to make a pitch that this is something that should be given the highest of priorities in terms of Measures Q and R, but also, I think it deserves more immediate attention before those monies from Measures Q and R will be available, because it's not clear when and if those monies will be available, and we have what really is a, uh, a more immediate problem that's affecting the health of the children. Um, to briefly summarize this, in nineteen ninety-nine, a, uh, a study was done of a typical California portable classroom, such as spread throughout the state and such as we have here in Santa Barbara- classroom, such as spread throughout the state and such as we have here in Santa Barbara, looking at blood and urine samples of children attending the class, and also looking at indoor air quality samples. And in the study, it was found that the blood and urine of children from spending time in the indoor air of the portable classroom had toxic levels of benzene, arsenic, and other phenol, or various phenols. Also, in the indoor air that was measured, the level of formaldehyde was found to be 13 times higher than the highest acceptable established limits. And formaldehyde, I should mention, is a known carcinogen. So, the air was, was quite concerning, and in 2000, the state of California launched a major study of indoor air, and eventually that committed in certain state laws, which are laws, they're not recommendations, requiring rates of airflow and, and other parameters for the indoor air. Our group feels that these laws only sort of scratched the tip of the iceberg, that really, we need to, to go beyond them, but we also feel that the laws aren't necessarily being met in Santa Barbara. The most important law is establishment of a, of a metric of 15 cubic feet per minute per occupant of airflow within the portable classrooms. Now, because this is a per-occupant measurement, this has been affected by the recent increase in class size. In 2006, I requested, and Mr. Het Young helped us do some testing of a single portable classroom at Washington School, and the airflow there was measured to be at 410 cubic feet per minute. There were at that time, 24 occupants in the classroom, which was sufficient, if you do the math. But if you also do the math of 15 cubic feet per minute per occupant, you really cannot have more than 27 occupants in a portable classroom, based on the district's testing of 410 cubic feet per minute of airflow exchange.
Excuse me, no objection, I'll give one more minute.
Okay. In, in, today, it's not uncommon at Washington, just, it's just, a school's starting to have 35, even close to 40 people in the classroom, figuring teachers, aides, et cetera. So, we're in violation of state law and endangering the children's health. So, we feel this, that there are short-term and long-term solutions to this indoor air problem. Long-term solutions are gonna require the kind of monies that measures Q and R may make available in terms of really replacing portable classrooms with permanent structures. But in the short term, we feel that the HVAC units really need to be updated, they're 16-year-old units, they were never designed for classrooms, they don't seem to be able to provide the airflow that's required. We also have concerns about mold. The EPA has addressed, mold is a serious problem with portable classrooms, and mold testing hasn't been performed as far as we know, when we requested testing, at least in 2006, mold testing was not provided, and we feel that's an important metric that needs to be looked at as well. So, I just wanted to let you know that our group is very concerned about this, that we've formed this task force, we'd like to work closely with the board, with the maintenance department, and we'd also like to request a, a meeting with Dr. Sarvas to just kind of review this issue and make sure that we can move quickly and effectively forward with this, because this really is an issue of health, and, and I can tell you, it's an issue of intense interest from parents. We've talked, and we've tried to have this proceed in, in a kind of rational and controlled way, that we can provide health, a healthy environment for our kids and for the teachers.
Thank you.
We'd be happy to, I, I know it's really not an agenda item, but it is probably helpful that, since Dr. Hope is here, and she, she's actually a nationally sought-out expert, if you have any questions, this is a good opportunity, maybe to just gather some introductory information.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Also, it might be helpful if you would forward some of your comments in writing to the board.
I have. You received an email last night.
And, I'm sure it will be looked into, and I'm sure Mr. Het Young and Mr. Sarvas will get back to you and work with you on it.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Board, on the priorities, I think best to just start with some questions. Dr. Noell?
Thank you. There are some things that would be, that, that I looked for here, that would be very helpful as context. I noticed that the projects, that the unfinished projects or projects that had to be shelved for I-98 funds or Measure V funds are listed. But it would be also, I think, helpful to have a list of the ones that were completed, so we'd see, see how much has already been spent at each site and on what kinds of projects, and that then helps create the context within which we can look at current, at the current allocations.
Yeah, we have a real good book on that, the Restoration.
Road to Renovation.
Road to Renovation, that spells it out, dollar for dollar at each site. So, we can get a copy, teach board member who wants it, but it's quite extensive.
I, I have a big memory of that. We got that?
The Road, if I may, the Road to Renovation addresses the secondary.
Secondary, not, okay.
We could put together a list for, for elementary. And if I could make one quick editorial comment, it's not.
Oh, okay.
One second. The Road to Renovation is secondary, not, not elementary, so we need to put it.
Okay, but more, but more, but nonetheless, it's not here.
Right, you're right.
It's not information that we have.
You're correct.
For the context of this discussion.
You're correct.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that, that, that on the list, we wanna be careful that, that the public doesn't feel that this is an all-encompassing list for, a proposal for the bond issues. This list far exceeds what would be available for us to do, should the bond issues pass.
Mrs. Deacon?
To follow up on Dr. Noell's request, I did ask Mr. Het Young for the funding information for I-98, and although we weren't able to find exactly all the funds that were spent, at least you weren't able to locate it immediately for me, he did forward to me the initial budgets for I-98, so we do have at least a benchmark starting place on that, so I just want everyone to know that Mr. Het Young has, has already begun the process on this. I, I'd like to make a couple of quick comments. Mr. Heron and I have been serving on the Steering Committee for the Measures Q and R, the bond campaign, and we've gotten.
You'd be as ex-official members.
As ex-official members, right. And, and we have been listening to a lot of feedback from those volunteers about their concerns that some priorities be addressed as they go out to make their case to the public. And one of the things that strikes me is that it would be possible for us to do is to go ahead and talk about those things, those large things that we know our three high schools need, and I think, at least I, I felt that there was general consensus on the part of the board, when we decided to put these on the ballot, that the kitchen at Santa Barbara High, the, the heating and ventilation replacement at Dos Pueblos, and the new wing replacing the portables at San Marcos, was, was very high for, for the secondary schools. And, and those projects, as we know, are shovel-ready, which to me adds the incentive to, to identify those as priorities. The junior highs have some lesser things on their lists. In terms of the, the elementaries, personally, I would feel comfortable perhaps identifying in consultation with the principals, if Mr. Het Young could come back to us, maybe even next week with that, the things that they find most pressing at their schools. And, and my first inclination is to say, follow up on those things that were not completed initially, although times have changed, and it may be that our priorities have changed as well, and so I, I think it is important to, to get feedback from the principals on that. And Mr. Het Young and I talked about the fact, we probably don't wanna add new projects to the list that the principals may have, unless there's some overriding concern, because I think a lot of work has been already to, to drop this list of, of things. So, I would like to, personally, to provide direction that for the secondary, that these three projects that I mentioned be given a high priority, as well as the, the libraries at Adams and Washington, and some of these modernization projects. And Mr. Het Young, maybe you could define for us what modernization is, because it's listed on many of the school lists, and, and I think it'd be nice to be a little more precise about that.
Typically, in, in a modernization project, you would go in and, and first of all, evaluate the systems that were there. And so, you're gonna evaluate your, your mechanical system and your electrical system and your plumbing system, to see what needs to be upgraded, whether it be restrooms in, in that area that serve the students that are in those classrooms. You have to have a restroom within a certain number of feet of every classroom, whether it be heating, ventilating systems, or if it's a computer lab, it would have air conditioning, otherwise it typically wouldn't. Electrical system, able, you know, do we add, to add more circuits to support technology? We'd also look at, at our surfaces, our windows. A lot of our older sites have, Santa Barbara High, La Cumbre, the beautiful wooden windows that take a lot of abuse over the years that need to be, we worked floor covering, wall treatments, painting, and lighting.
Okay.
A lot of our, most of our classrooms have had some lighting upgrades, others still require lighting upgrades, not only for the amount of light, but for energy savings.
Okay, that's helpful, and I, I guess ultimately, we're going to need some price tags. I understand they will be estimates, but if we're going to set priorities, I, I don't wanna overpromise what we can deliver. If the bonds do in fact pass, we can only pay for so much, so I, I think it is important to get some kind of sense of, of what the costs are associated with these, and that could come with a scaled-down list of priorities, so that you're not pricing out every single one of these items. Thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
I agree with many of the things that Mrs. Deacon had to say. I personally am, given how long we've been rating on these shovel-ready projects, and also the ones that have DSA approval and may require DSA resubmission, I, I mean, I think it's certainly worthwhile to check with those principals if that would still be their priority. I would be surprised in these particular cases if that changed. But I do think it's worthwhile to go to the principals and have them take a look at the list and say, "What does your community?" And, you know, I wanna be careful that it's not just one person's opinion, that it really is a community-based, school-community-based input to the district. I know that, you know, we had public comment on the portable situation, we're, we're not agendized to talk about portables in general, but really just in the context of priorities for Q and R. And I guess, in terms of portable replacement, where, how old are our oldest portable, portable and where are they?
Probably, off the top of my head, some of our oldest portables are at Adams and a quad at La Colina. If, if, if I can just go back, there was a quad of old portables at La Cumbre that we demolished, and now that's the Community Academy parking lot. There's also a quad of portables, four of them put together, at La Colina. If you're standing in the front of the school, it'd be the back left of the school that are fairly old. There was a quad like that at Galita Valley that housed part of OAS, it was demolished also. You have the, the wing where the computer lab is at Adams, and another wing that are fairly similar to the portables that were demolished and replaced with new buildings at Franklin as part of that modernization. Those were replaced with non-portable units, it's more of a permanent construction. So, for the secondary district, I'd have to say probably that, that quad at La Colina, and maybe two portables way out back that OAS is currently using, I believe, for their library. Hopefully, we'll hit the road one of these days soon, and, and then, like I say, those, I think it's seven classrooms at Adams that are extremely old. Those are 60s and 70s. There are also some older individual portables at Adams that are not quite that old, there's, there's some at Washington. There's two at Santa Barbara Junior High that are currently used for administrative purposes, not for classrooms, that are fairly old. I think Dr. Sarvas was housed in one at one time. He can attest to the age.
I think that what might be helpful as part of the Q and R priority process is also to sort of come up with a, I think it would be helpful for, for the board to see the facilities discussion around, when do you replace portables with permanent structures? And what would be the priority order for replacing portables? I have to say that one of my priorities also would be ones that are not DSA-approved. I don't know, I think there's still just a few out there.
There, there are a few, they're either, they are either becoming approved or being demolished, which is why you'll see on the, I don't know if it's tonight's agenda, where we had two portable classrooms at Adams that were, that were, well, the contractor moved them off-site. Whether or not they've been demolished or not, I don't know, but they're not, no longer used for school purposes.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, like Ms. Parker, I also agree with most of what both of my colleagues have already stated, but I also had a question, because I, I absolutely agree that the priority should, that priorities should be given to any projects that are required, that are required for whatever reason, by code, safety, Division of State, Architect, et cetera, and also by our ADA lawsuit. So, I'm wondering if we could get an idea of what projects fall into that, those categories, and how much we anticipate those projects costing, which I think is somewhat what Ms. Parker was asking for as well.
For our ADA lawsuit, it would be a restroom, additional restroom at Peabody, out on the, I'll call it the north end of the campus. There's an area between two portables where one would fit. At Peabody, the issue is the distance from existing classrooms to a restroom has to be X number of feet, and we are beyond that limit. We, we were, no, as codes change, at some point in time, you need to come back and meet the new code, and for accessibility, that, that was part of that. The other item for elementaries, for our, our lawsuit settlement, is our playgrounds that do not have accessible equipment or a fall surface that is of the fi bar. As part of our ADA lawsuit, we've agreed to no longer put fi bar in any new installations and at some of our existing installations to replace the fi bar and to replace the equipment. We've written to the plaintiff's attorney and, and let them know where we stand. We don't have funding to replace some of the equipment, or add some of the equipment, or the fall surface, unless the bond issue did pass. And we asked if they were gonna direct us to remove that equipment and fall surface at this time, or to let it stay longer, and we've received no response. So, I guess no news is good news.
I, I think, to complete that answer, I think you have a pretty good grasp on restrooms or other ADA lawsuit issues at the secondary level as well.
Right. At, at the secondary level, we have some projects that we have completed that before we do any other projects, we're gonna have to do additional ADA work. More of this is being driven by the Division of State Architect than our lawsuit settlement. At the time of our lawsuit settlement, the, the settlement required us to do more than what Division of State Architect would require us to do. Now, it's kind of the other way around. Now, DSA has had some new interpretations, more strict interpretations, and they are requiring that all of accessibility outstanding issues at your campus be taken care of before they approve a new project. In other words, when they looked at the, the proposed project for San Marcos High School for replacing the portables with a permanent wing, you need to furnish them with a complete campus map showing all of the accessible paths of travel, all of the restrooms, they check all these things, and they want those things brought into compliance as, and done as part of your new project. So, if we were gonna go forward with a project at San Marcos High School to replace that wing, we would also have to do some additional ramps and switchbacks and things like that. As you know, that school is kind of, it, not as, nothing like Santa Barbara High, but there are some, some good areas in there that, that are too steep, that there's alternate paths of travel, but not.
Yeah, to be clear about that one, that's Department of State or Division of State Architect that would require us to complete the classroom ADA accessibility, it's not so much an issue with the lawsuit. But we would not be able to replace the 35-year-old portables at that school and build a permanent wing, so that we could house the Health Academy at that school without doing this as well.
Are you going to give us some numbers for these?
Ah, I don't have.
Not necessarily now, but.
Yeah, 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 we could. We've had, we've had architects' estimates. On all these projects that have been designed, that are shovel-ready, or that would require DSA resubmission, we have had in the past architects' estimates of what those would cost. By the time you order a portable modular restroom, have it placed on-site, do everything else, you're probably talking $100,000.
My, my question really was, the cost of the accessibility issues as a separate item. As Dr. Sarvas said, so we wanna build something in San Marcos, but we have to solve, the whole campus has to be, has to be cleaned before we can do that. What's the price tag?
We've done, we've done most of that campus already, so the price tag would not be near what it would have been.
But, but you will be able to help us with some numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, I would caution us about numbers, though, and this is all part of lessons learned. As we went into Measure V 2000, we had prices, well, it was just before, there was a huge change in the cost of construction, and China started buying all the steel in the world. It was also at the beginning of a major change in construction prices here in our community, in the bidding climate here in our community. Now, that's gone the other way, but it's difficult to anticipate what it might be in three years, in five years, in seven years.
But that's gonna be true, of course, on all of this, and as Mrs. Deacon said, we don't wanna.
Well.
Make a list that, that vastly exceeds our, even the. don't want to make a list that vastly exceeds even the wildest dreams that we can afford.
Exactly, so, so what you will get, and this is my point, what you will get is a fairly broad range, and it will have a 35% contingency attached to it so that we can, we can take care of any other problems along the way.
And we know the longer we wait on projects, the more the cost typically goes up. We've had a straight, a slight change in that recently, but I, I'm sure the trend will reverse. I'd like to address these priorities that you provided, and by the way, I, I thought you did a good job, you and Mr. Smith, of coming up with these priorities to consider. And I, for my own purposes, I just kind of mentally rank order them just to see where I would come out on these, but one thing occurs, that occurs to me, and I don't want to ask for something that's too complicated to do, but if we were to develop some kind of point system so that we looked at a project and said, this project qualifies on four of these bullet points, and this one qualifies on three of these, that might be useful in helping us to land where we want to in terms of projects. And we could weight things like meeting DSA code and disability access more heavily in assigning those points to, that might help us, that might be a way to flesh out those things. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, this issue of equity among schools, and I know it's an issue that we've all grappled with, but I personally would rather look at the projects as, on their own merit, rather than making an effort necessarily to give each school equal amounts of money, because we know in the past, some schools benefited more from Measure V, some benefited more from I-98, and so.
That wasn't intended to be equal amounts of money. That was, that was intended to be that they, that they would have equity in their programs, that they would have comparable facilities to deliver the curriculum.
Right, and they can be different, but, but good, and I, I mean, I think the, the library piece certainly, you know, equity comes to mind there.
Yes.
And so thank you for clarifying that, because I know we can define, define equity in other ways. And then I will just finish off with one statement about the green projects. When we contemplate those, we might want to consider those projects that are just kind of standalone green things like solar panels, but also, I'm hoping most of our projects will incorporate green elements so that, you know, say we build a library and we put skylights in it to save electric, you know, electric costs and things like that, so that green pieces kind of is diffused throughout all, I would hope, almost all of the projects, and so that's important to keep in mind as well.
New California building codes coming into effect real soon, I think it's within the next six months, and that's another step towards being green. And we've always asked our architects to look at energy efficiency and natural light, and I think the, that the Engineering Academy building, once that's completed, you'll see that there were some attempts made to get natural light into those workspaces.
I have a couple of questions, just for clarification purposes. Assuming this passes, is there a spigot of money that starts flowing?
I'd probably let Mr. Smith address that.
Yeah, probably, we, we, looking at probably three series of bonds in each district, and depending on the Balancing Act, is to make sure that you issue debt that maintains the tax rate at the amount that we've agreed to in terms of the covenant with the community. So what would most likely happen is the first issuance in each district would be in February of '11.
And percentage-wise?
What was it, like 15 in the elementary and 30 in the secondary?
Something like that.
It's in the first series.
15%?
15 million.
15 million.
And then depending on, you know, growth in AV and things like that, and depending also on the amount of pressure from the projects, you would space those, maybe the next issuance in five or six years, could be seven years, and the next in 14 or 15 years, or whatever the case may be.
That's why I want to make sure that.
There's a variety of different factors.
Yeah, I want to make sure that point's understood. It's, it's not all at one time. Dr. Noel?
Yeah, I want, most of the things I've said so far have been questions, clarifications. First thing I wanted to say is, is to praise Dr. Sarvis for that approach that he's taking here, maybe you could talk more about it, but when we did this before with Measure V, I think there were some very, we made some mistakes in terms of how, in terms of the process for deciding these priorities. And in retrospect, it looked like it was a scramble. And I know you've got some thoughts on this, I think everybody would like to hear them.
Well, there's, there's no teacher-like experience on things like this. You know, in, in my participation, and I came sort of late to the process, and schools are involved in setting their own priorities, and frankly, I think that's a mistake. I think we need to, as some of the other board members have said, look at the projects, look at the importance of the project. I think the board needs to establish those priorities. Well, there are some other considerations, and I've already commented on some of them. As you look at these priorities, some may actually be in conflict with each other. For instance, if we put those priorities higher that provide relief to the general fund and those that are green projects, well, we could spend all of the money on solar projects and not get anything else done. So it's obvious that we need to get some of those other things done as well. So I think as we look down this list, we'll want to talk about the relative merits of these priorities, and I like the idea of a number rating, although I also think there are certain things that just have to get done. And after we cover those things that have to get done, then we can go ahead and prioritize the rest. I know that the board can't do that all right now, because in order to prioritize those, getting very close to the numbers requires a lot of time. It'll take more time to be right on target on those numbers than we even have before this election. I think by identifying a range of costs for each of these critical projects, I think we could determine which things would need to be handled at each of the schools, and then continue that process of prioritizing as we know what amounts of money are left, and this may take a number of years. We won't be able to decide in December or even January, because you never know at what point this money is running out, because the actual costs are not known until you carefully design each project, until you go to bid, you get those bids back, until you run into any problems like hidden underground whatever that you might run into, and we've run into plenty of that in our experience.
Well, that's part, I wanted to just go on a little bit. The, one of the points you just made is a very important one, because last time we were, we got all these state matching funds, but they came in piecemeal. They came in secret over a period of time, hard to predict, makes an enormous difference, so you raised, you brought in a huge amount of matching money. So that's a factor that influences this, and I don't know how to deal with it at this point. I think it's, I think the point that, that as much, some sense of priorities would be very helpful for the election, for purposes of the election. I like that point a lot. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about using the word equity, because I can see people reading that and saying, oh, well, they got more than I did, you know, meaning, meaning equal. Last time we used parity, which is a weasel word, doesn't, but, but, but maybe you need a weasel word, with a little bit of flexibility to it. I, I, maybe Mrs. Cordero, who has a more diverse vocabulary, could come up with some alternatives, you know. She teaches the subject, I don't. But anyway, I think I'd be very careful about anything that suggests that it's going to be an equal deal for everyone, because, because parity has, for me, has to do with dealing with non-comparables, and that's what we're, that's what's involved here. I want to stress, it seems to me that, rather, I know we have priorities that we look at in terms of campuses, in terms of modernization, things that are falling apart, but it seems to me that health and safety are very important, and what Dr. Shapiro and his colleagues bring up is utterly crucial, and while, while you could make a legal case that, and put that under compliance, I just put it under health. But health, health and safety, as, for me, has to be number one, and number two, you don't have much choice, you have to be in compliance. And then I, from there, I say, okay, then we move into these other considerations, and I don't think I have anything to add to what Mrs. Deacon and Ms. Cordero and Ms. Parker have said, that these are all really very good points, and I really like, appreciate their comments and contributions.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, first of all, unfortunately for this conversation, I usually teach my students not to use weasel words, so I'm not sure I'm going to be helpful in that regard. But I was just wondering, Dr. Sarvis mentioned, and I think we all kind of generally know this, that there are some projects that just have to get done, and I certainly have a sense of which ones I think they are. But I was wondering if we could perhaps get a list from you of what your sense is of which are the ones that really just are absolutely necessary, and, you know, we really don't want to debate too much, because we know we have to do them, and then we can kind of look at the others, because that also helps us get a sense of, or at least it would be helpful to me, helps me get a sense of how many projects we're looking at and how many are sort of still discretionary. So if, that would be, I would find that really helpful if we could get that from you.
I agree, the, you know, the code and safety, the ADA lawsuit settlement, those are the kinds of things that probably have to be done, need to be at the top of the list. The items that are left over, ready to go, shovel-ready, you know, are probably on top of the list. So a list of the ones that, for the AD lawsuit, ADA lawsuit, it'd be nice to know which ones exactly those are, because I think those are probably very high on the list. There are some things, I guess, if you look at the fact sheets we're handing out versus this list of priority, can everything on that fact sheet fit someplace on these priorities? I mean, I, I look at update, repair, update, and replace aging school infrastructure. What priority would that come under?
That's the modernization, I think.
But where is modernization on the priorities?
Well, it's on the individual school.
No, that's my point.
I understand, yeah.
For, for the previously identified priorities for modernization, they would be previously identified projects.
I'm just. You, you, as far as, when you talk about repair of infrastructure, a lot of your modernization is just that repair of infrastructure. You know, I'll be a proponent of some projects that, as Dr. Noel said earlier, that weren't that sexy, like replacing a roof to protect the building envelope from water intrusion, those things that may not be on a school's priority, because they're looking at other different things, and they should, they're looking at things from a different angle than a facilities person like myself, so you get a blend of these, and you come forward with recommendations to the board. But if you have plumbing systems that aren't functioning properly, they become a health and safety issue. If you have electrical systems that aren't functioning properly, pretty soon they will become that issue.
My question is, is everything on the fact sheet fall under one of these priorities that is listed? I don't want to get in a situation of saying, gee, we want this done, and somebody's saying, well, it's not a priority. So can we hang our hat? Everything on this fact sheet is.
By fact sheet, you're meaning the measure Q and R.
The district put out, the fact sheet.
About to improve the quality of local education, Santa Barbara School District, Shal, those things.
There's a fact sheet in the agenda that is now on the website that has, and one section is, how does this bond support student achievement and high-quality instruction for Santa Barbara Secondary School Districts, 10,000 students, and then there's a list of items.
I would ask for time to read and make sure, but off the top of my head, I would say most likely yes.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure that we.
And I believe the answer is yes as well.
Just want to make sure we.
I don't want to just give you a yes off the top.
Okay, I know, I just want to make sure we don't turn something down, because somebody later on says, well, gee, that doesn't fall under any of these priorities.
Well, and as, as, as a board, I would hope that you would have the option of addressing those priorities throughout the project as situations and times may change. And then another thing, just as a personal thought, when you say projects would be given to priorities that create equity amongst schools, that's probably what the board does every time they approve the project. So whether you want to list that as a priority, or whether it happens in fact, because that's the way this school district does business, you know, it's.
The other thing, just as a comment, I'm on the Oversight Committee for Measure V for City College, and one thing I liked about that is they had a line item just to do the nitty-gritty things that are on campus that were just aggravations. And the fact that they got rid of a lot of aggravation that were minor in scope, but the faculty and students noticed the change almost overnight of the things they did. They may never be the highest priority, but when you walk on a campus and you see a wall that the plaster is off, but that's not a high priority, but if that was plastered, it would make a huge difference. Or you see, you see junky lockers that are never used, and the principal wants to take them out, that's never going to make a priority. I hope there's some funds available that we can do aggravation relief, and it doesn't take very much.
Sort of a high visual priority, but low cost?
Yeah, but there'll never be.
Disaggravation?
Disaggravation, they'll, they'll, disaggravation, they'll never make a high priority list. If you asked a principal, what's your high priority, they would never get to the list. But it's amazing how much you can get done with a little bit of money and have good feelings on campus versus, you know, a library.
Mr. Daniel?
Just a quickie, in the same spirit that you're saying, this became a topic of discussion over and over again. The, the language that, that is on the ballot is the only thing you assume the public has read. Everything else, you hope they've read, but that, that's the binding stuff. And I think that we have to be very careful to make sure that the linkages are not too tortured, as when we go out from, from this two levels of detail, that it's a fairly clear thing, we're not kind of, you know, reaching for interpretations, but that they're fairly clean.
Mrs. Deacon?
I like your idea about the aggravation list, and I, I'm thinking that those are the kinds of projects that we do go to the sites to find out, where's the drinking fountain that doesn't work, you know, where's the parking lot where people always trip over something that's in the way, and, and parents and students, you know, the ASPs at the high schools could take a poll. I mean, we'd have to make it clear that these are not necessarily big-ticket items, it's not the dream list, but instead the punch list for smaller things, and I like that idea.
Any other discussion? We have one more public comment, with no objection, I'll let Mr. Wheeler speak.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, speaking as an individual that serves on the bond Q and R committee. Just a couple of highlight points. One of the things, this is a real chance to lead in the community in terms of green technology and its implementation in our schools, to, to model for children who will be the next generation of green builders, why it's important to really do this. It's also a very excellent chance, I think, to look to employ local community members that are going to be job force, you know, work, work jobs that'll be out there for our community members to take advantage of. So I think that's a real significant piece of this bond measure. And as you've already identified, there are hundreds and hundreds, probably thousands of projects that will be out there. As a union leader, I certainly get an opportunity to hear from my members as to what those projects are that are causing aggravation and irritation. Having kids in school, I hear from them what these, those are, that's a really wonderful idea as a, as quick, as a quick fix, low cost, but, but high aggravation factor. But really, this is a chance for us to come together as a community, to really reach out and realize what a resource our, schools are for our community. Anytime you drive by a school, you're going to see somebody out there doing something, whether it's hitting golf balls, I'm not sure if that's legal or not, to, you know, playing on the playground, to using our basketball hoops, to using the pools, using our stages for different theatrical performances. So it's really an opportunity for us to enjoin the community in the wholeness of this project to, to, you know, create a real pinnacle of pride in our schools, and to really, I think, save our schools. And this is an opportunity for us to do that, I would encourage the community to do that, and I would encourage you as board members to lend your full support to this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Board, I'd like to bring this discussion back to you just as soon as we can.
Thank you.
In fact, I'd like to bring it back this next week. In fact, I'd like to bring it back this next week, knowing that the campaign is going to be a short campaign, it's going to be geared up very soon, and the community needs direction. There are some things that are just absolute musts on this. It is absolutely necessary that we have heat at Dos Pueblos High School. It's absolutely necessary that we have a kitchen at Santa Barbara High School. So some of those things are musts. We'd like to list those, we'd like to give some indication about critical projects on all campuses and try to get that back to you, Dave, this next week.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Good, thank you, Dr. Sarvas. I think, does it, is now break time? Oh, no, it's, no, it's got. We've got the special ed group, and I don't want to wait, have them wait any longer. Let's go to that and then we'll take a break. Update on special education F3.
And we have Kerry Mills, our Executive Director, who's going to stay in special education.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight I have seven topics that I'd like to go over, but I know we have 20 minutes, so, and that includes questions. So I'm going to go over them briefly. You have a lot of the backup before you, so, and I do have a couple of people that I'm going to ask to help me do this presentation. So the first thing I'd like to just very quickly go over is our staffing. We have really focused, this has been one of my top priorities, and I really wanted to make sure that all of the schools were fully staffed when we started. And so I am so happy to report that we are just about 99% there at the school level. So huge thanks to Ann Peake for the certificated staff and huge thanks to Elaine Alvarado for the classified staff. You have a report in front of you as to the status of those positions. We only have a couple of part-time teachers that are left to fill. And we have a deaf and hard-of-hearing, we had a last-minute resignation. So we have interviews scheduled for all of those. At the district level, I've put the schools first, so next week we're going to concentrate on the elementary program specialist and on the remaining secretaries that need to be filled. I also wanted to just point out briefly that those were FICMAT goals to be fully staffed, so I feel really good about that. And I'm hoping that the schools are fully staffed and ready to go. I haven't heard from any school that they're not, so. And then secondly, just to give your attention to the organizational chart that's in your pocket. So just very quickly, that's an updated organizational chart. It still says draft because we still are filling some of those positions, such as the elementary program specialist. It has a date on it as to the last version done. We've been changing it pretty much on a daily basis. You'll see that on one side is the elementary staff and on the other side is the secondary staff. And if the staff member has an asterisk, that means that they work in both districts. And I'm thrilled, obviously, to welcome Kirsten Escobedo as our new elementary director. Very, very pleased to have her. And of course, Dr. Michelle Britton-Bass is our secondary director, so. Couple of quickly new positions to point out. We have a lead nurse now, Michelle Melendez, that's working out very well. We have a new position data specialist, Julie Howard. She's been working in our office all along, but she is now our official data specialist and she's doing just wonderful things with our SACE system, doing a lot of trainings at our schools and supporting our teachers. So that is working out wonderfully. Moving on to the professional development activities. You have a list in your packet for the professional development opportunities that we had for August. First of all, on the first one, I'd just like to thank Michelle Britton-Bass for putting together the activities on the 16th. She's in charge of our professional development work group. And she put together those workshops. And those were done, very quickly, behavioral strategies were done by our SALPA behavior specialists. The collaborative teaching at the secondary level were done, again, by our SALPA director, Jereese Butterfield, and Claudia Acheveria? Acheveria, thank you, thank you. And then our esteemed program specialist, Debbie Keys-Thomas and Leana Aranita did the goal-writing workshop. And then lastly, the collaborative teaching at the elementary level. Dr. Jereese Butterfield again and Dr. Michelle Britton-Bass led that workshop. So sadly, we had to cancel our CPR and first aid training. Our trainer canceled at the last minute, so that was very unfortunate. And we will have to reschedule that and get a new trainer. The third one, you Ed alluded to earlier, and I was really thrilled. Ed was able to attend our professional development day for our special ed certificated staff for at least a good while. And then Dr. Sarvas and Ms. Swawsky also came for a good while, and I really thank you for that. I felt like the day went really well. I started out with kind of a state of the union, told the staff some issues that they really needed to know, talked about staffing, talked about the FICMAT action plan, where we are in that. Talked about our new special ed parent advisory group and also let them all know that we still have our CEAC group and that they are an independent group and also very collaborative and helpful to us. Our guest speaker that day was Jan Tomsky. She's an attorney from Fagan Friedman in Full Frost, and she's from the Bay Area. She's an attorney I worked with for 10 years in the Bay Area, and she's extremely collaborative with parents. We had no fair hearings there at all. And she had a really great presentation for the staff. I think they learned a lot, they enjoyed it, she's a great presenter, and so I think that went really well. We also, Jan, in the afternoon, talked about building and maintaining effective relationships with parents. And so that, again, was very refreshing to hear from an attorney. Our behavioral strategies workshop, just really quickly, we had 150 or so instructional assistants, so that was great. Big thanks go to our program specialist, Debbie Keys-Thomas and Leana Aranita for leading that. That was great. And then the instructional assistants had the other half of the day to work at their sites or meet the kids that they were going to be working with. Let's see, next. I wanted to just let you know that we have received the laptops that we ordered, the laptops for the school. So we have one per school, one for each special ed department in each school. And those are primarily intended to do IEPs on. So the teachers can take the laptops to the IEP, use the technology to do their IEP, use all of the SALPA forms and so on. And then we also ordered printers, wireless printers. And so they will be able to print the IEP then and there, which will be a really good improvement.
Dr. Mills? I had a question.
Sure.
Back to the professional development.
Uh huh.
Was there or is there anything planned for principals?
You know, I had a principals workshop right before school ended on, kind of, as a result of the special ed review. And I went over a lot of compliance items and all of the principals attended that. And I just, I spoke for a while at the management meeting, but I don't have a new workshop set up for the principals yet.
Do you plan one?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, let's see, I was talking about the laptops. At this point, I would like to invite Debbie Keys-Thomas, our program specialist for the high school, up. I have invited her to make a presentation about something that we are very excited about in our department. And I know Debbie is particularly excited, so I wanted her to present it.
Well, as you know, for the last 18 years I've been teaching, I have taught students with severe handicapping conditions in the secondary area at San Marcos. I've spent many an hour on the public bus with students that use wheelchairs. So I've been probably trying to advocate for a van for the last 18 years. Here it is. I want to thank Susan Deacon for listening. She came to my classroom one of her first years and she said, what do you need? I said, I need a van. And so through her leadership, I think you as a board listened. It was also one of the outcomes of, the positive outcomes of the FICMAT report that we could provide these kinds of activities for the students. You don't know how much time, I always felt like only tapping my thumbs, hoping that I was going to catch the bus or hoping that there was a seat for my student in a wheelchair on the bus when I did get the bus. So this is going to allow many of our students who do use a wheelchair to access the community during their school day for job training, you know, all kinds of different activities. It'll also allow for other students to use the van as well. I'm going to be kind of, I am now the van queen. And so I'm going to be developing some Google calendars for people to access that. And we're excited, I think all the teachers are really excited too, so, thank you.
I have a question about that.
Dr. Noel?
Does that mean we're saving the money we used to pay to Santa Barbara Transportation or some of that money?
These are actually, the activities that, these are actually during school day hour activities. But, you know, for, oh, I feel like I always yell, but I've got my teacher voice on. It primarily will be for school day activities, but a lot of the times we have had to contract for larger activities, like I used to take my students to, you know, a school, you know, an all-day activity. And I would have to contract with Santa Barbara Transportation to get my students that use wheelchairs to those kinds of activities. So I would assume that that kind of savings would be there. But for the most part, these are for, primarily used for community-based activities.
There's no plan to use them for home-to-school transportation?
No. Not at this point. Nope, nope.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. I'd also like to, at this point, I'd like to invite Eric Hancy, who is our Action Plan Manager, to give you just a little overview about our action plan and what we've been working on and kind of just give you a glimpse of our software.
Just a glimpse. Good evening. Basically, the purpose for this presentation is twofold. First is to explain the process for transferring the information from the priorities of special education document into the Concept Draw software program. The second is to show a couple of examples of reports that can be generated from Concept Draw. So hopefully, this will give you a framework to understand what information's being captured and what sort of tracking capabilities we'll have ongoing. Thank you very much. So just as a disclaimer, the information that's being gathered right now is still in process. So the graphs that are included tonight are informational only. They don't reflect an accurate status of what we've got. I'll explain that a little bit more in just a minute. But the first thing really to talk about is to get some new numbers to become familiar with. The original number from FICMAT was 153 recommendations. Now, the stakeholder subcommittees, when they went through the analysis, they found recommendations that could be applied to multiple goals as well as recommendations that needed to be broken down into separate sections, like 48A and B. So when you add up the recommendations that were repeated or were applied to multiple goals, you come up with a new number of 197. So you take that 197 recommendations, and the stakeholders prioritized 124 of them, and they did not prioritize 73 of them. Now, activity is still being done on those 73. There's still things that are going on there. They're still being tracked separately. But since they weren't included in the document that was accepted by the board, they're not currently being tracked with these statistics, they're a separate group. So that's, that was that. Do you have a comment that you wanted to add further?
So just a quick comment, I know that you had asked me to look at that list of the non-prioritized items. And so we are currently doing that. We're going through all of those items, both the items that are included and the items that are not included. And we are putting all of those in our action plan as appropriate. So I just wanted to let you know we haven't forgotten that.
Good memory.
So now for a quick review of the board-accepted priorities of special education document. The 124 FICMAT recommendations were basically broken down into these four goals. So first one being improved communication information structure, second, improved professional development and training, effective programs and services, and the effective organizational structure. So those were the four overall goals. And then within each goal, there were anywhere between five to seven action items. And then within each action item, there were anywhere between two and 18 FICMAT recommendations. So that you total all those up and you get 124 tasks that were prioritized. Now, this is one representation of the graphs that we can look at on an ongoing basis. I kind of like this from the standpoint that it gives you a pictorial representation with the pie graph of where you are percentage-wise. So if you looked at all four goals, you could say, okay, well, you're 50% done with goal number one. And if you wanted to break that down, then you say, okay, these are the six action items and you can see what percentage you are on that action item. So it will give us something when we get further down the line. Right now, we're still putting those numbers in and cleaning them up, so I'll talk about that a little bit more. So we've got four major goals, we've got five to seven action items, we've got two to 18. I want to take just a minute to explain some of the assumptions that were done with data entry because the program requires specific dates. You have starts, stops, and deadlines, when something is going to be completed. So the start of project date, we entered as 9/28/2009. That was the first stakeholders' meeting, so we decided that would be a good date to use as the start of the project. The end of project date that we put in was August 15th, 2011. That is basically a year from, you know, right now, but before the start of school next year. That, these dates can be changed as appropriate. But to start the data entry, we needed to put some dates in, those are the dates we came up with there. If an action item said summer project, it was entered as August 31st of this year. If it was indicated as complete, we put in a date of May 31st of this year. Some action items were characterized or tabbed ongoing or in progress, so we entered a date of December 31st. We just needed to have something in there so that we could work with. And if a target completion date had already been passed, we came up with a new target date and we put January 31st, 2011. Now, that's not to say if we go back and review a task and say, you know what, we can get this one done by October 15th, we can go back in there, we can change it, and we can go on accordingly. But we had to start with something to get in. Now, the priorities of special education document also assigned responsible entities, sort of as generic designation, so you'd have special education director or you would say special education administrators or clerical staff. We went through with each one and applied a specific position to each one. So it'll now say executive director or it will say program specialist or director. So we got very specific assignments, people that will be responsible for each task. The next step is to assign a percentage complete with each task. And in order to determine this, we're compiling evidence to support whatever percentage we come up with because our feeling is if you say it's 75% complete, you better be able to look to something and say, here's why we think it's 75% complete and this is what's left to make it 100%. So we're still in that process, which is why I say the numbers are not, they don't reflect an accurate depiction yet because we're still cleaning that data up. So to summarize where we are to date, all of the FICMAT recommendations have been entered in. They're now reflected in the program as tasks. The responsible entities, target completion dates, and percentages completes are still being assessed and updated appropriately. And the software can generate several different styles of reports. I've shown the first two. There's some other ones that are, these are called dashboard views. They can give a quick overview of the overall project. So if you total all these up, it's 124. So that gives you a quick read on which ones are completed, how many are in progress, how many have not been started. So it's a nice quick read on it. You can also then, it translates that into a dashboard, you know, how are you doing on this? Is it fair, good, excellent? Well, right now, it just says fair, but that's because the data is not cleaned up yet. But it's a way that we'll be able to give a quick read ongoing as the information goes. So that's basically what I had. I've got copies of my talking points and notes, if anyone would like copies of that, if there's any questions.
Any comments?
Oh, can I jump in here? I just want to say that the special ed task force saw Mr. Hancy audition for this job. And Dr. Noel provided the software, which, you know, it's, and it's so great to see it come together like this and how well it's working and what a great guiding document it'll be. But I'd just like to thank everyone involved in making this happen because I'm thrilled at the progress you've made. And I know that's been a huge asset to carry, to have this, you know, this help, this important help. So thank you for doing so well.
We're getting there, we're getting closer, thank you.
Mr. Herron, could I piggyback on that?
Yes.
I think it's important to acknowledge and thank Bob Noel for, for researching this, figuring out what could become, what, what we could become on this, finding out how to get it done, being persistent about it, and getting us to this point, so.
Don't, don't forget. You have to thank me for blowing it in the presentation, but he saved my neck. That's how we found him.
It all worked out.
Things happen for a reason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I just wanted to add one key point. Well, we have 197 goals, and I appreciate that my name is on all of 197. I do wanna share. So, this is a district-wide effort, and I really appreciate, the other departments are really, really helping with this. There are many of the objectives that relate to all students, not just special ed students. And so, this will be a district-wide effort, and I really appreciate all of the support that I'm getting from all of the departments involved. And we are naming them along with me. So, the last thing that I wanted to cover, just very quickly, is Dr. Carol Miller. She's been our Communication Specialist, and you may wonder what she's been working on. She's been working very hard on those procedural manuals. She's completed them. We are in the editing process right now, so we have a certificated and a classified procedural manual, and very comprehensive. She's done a great job. She's also been working on some alternate dispute resolution to settle some disputes. And, she has been working with Mr. Hansi and myself on the action plan, so that's been very helpful. And lastly, she's been working on revising our district webpage, so that should be improving all along. So, thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. I've got a couple of just comments. One, what I really appreciated at your all-day event was the way you involved your entire team. It wasn't a one-person show. You, you challenged all your staff to be there, be involved, and take leadership roles, so I thought that was, that was great. The computers?
Yes.
Okay, we've got the computers?
Yes, we have the laptops.
Are, are our people all up to date on how to use them, and?
They're just being deployed now, so we've gotten the laptops, and the IT department is doing their formatting and so on, so I'm not sure that they've all gone out to sites. So, they're in that process.
Do you need any training?
As far as the states.
Does your staff need training on how to use them?
On using the computers themselves.
For IEP purposes?
We have those trainings with Julie Howard, our data specialist, so she's going out to all the schools and doing training.
Okay.
Yeah, she's doing that.
Computers are no good if they aren't used.
Exactly.
Okay. Good, thank you very, oh. The document you gave us early in the summer, in a board brief, FICMAT talks about communication. That document, if followed, you're gonna have so much communication going on, it'll be unbelievable. I mean, the number of groups that are meeting on a regular basis.
Oh, the jobalikes.
The jobalikes.
Yes, yes, we have those going on.
I mean, if they all take place and, and work correctly, that was a great document. I really appreciated that update.
Thank you.
That would get, set the tone for the summer that I thought was, was extremely good, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Just to let you know on that, the, the staff did get a, kind of a welcome-back letter from me, and the very, the staff that is involved in the particular jobalike got a schedule of those jobalikes with the, with my letter. So, the relevant jobalikes, and if they were in two of them, or three of them, then they got those schedules, so they could all plan ahead. And my, my secretary, Celeste Bortoli, has actually put it on the Google Calendar and sent it out to the people, so it appears on their calendar.
I mean, that, you know, communication was one of the biggest problems we faced, because of, you know, the FICMAT report, and what you've done there alone will solve a lot of the problems. So, very much appreciated.
Good, thank you.
Others? Mrs. Deacon?
Sorry, I don't wanna take too much time, but I would like to really thank Dr. Mills for her leadership, because the fact that you filled all the positions at the sites before you even turned to your own office is a real testimony to, to how hard you, 'cause I know you had to work very hard when you didn't have anybody else up there, so I really appreciate that. And, I did wanna mention, just so that everyone remembers, that the money for the vans and for the computers.
Yes.
Were federal stimulus money.
Yes.
And so, I think we all need to keep.
Definitely.
Reminding ourselves and the public that that money was spent and, and well-spent. And, thank you to Debbie Keys Thomas for mentioning that. I think Mrs. Cordero was with me on that first visit, and, you know, the challenges we face as board members are so great. We don't quite often see tangible results, so when you see something like that, it, it makes you feel good, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. We're very excited about them, the vans.
Nothing like a new car.
Yeah.
You can kick the tires.
New car smell and all.
I mean, it's really tangible.
And, okay, we will take a break with that.
Thank you.
And come back at 9:40.
I want to invite Dr. Cynthia White up. I know that board members have been following this, as far as first, the National Governors' Governors' Association passing the standards in June, and then, two months to the day, our California School Board adopting them. And, in the same fashion that Dr. White does everything, we immediately almost, I think within a week, had copies for every school. The principals at the management retreat went home with all of, you know, the tabbed copies of the new standards. It's amazing how quickly that happened. But, I will, I won't say anything more, I'll let her explain what we're doing and how we're moving forward with this.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, for the public, I wanted to say that the Common Core standards were developed through a state-led, led effort to establish consistent, clear standards in English Language Arts and Math to better prepare the nation's students in, to be successful in a competitive global economy. The Governors' Association and the Council of State School Officers, including Jack O'Connell, were part of this effort, and 48 states, including California, participated in the Common Core Standards Initiative. The two states not participating were Alaska and Texas. And everybody laughs about that, but that's just one of those things. The standards were developed in collaboration with many, many stakeholder groups, and I think that that's an important thing to note. I think the two most important things about the Common Core standards are that we're not calling them national standards, which was something that was brought forward initially. It's called the Common Core, and that it was a state-led effort and a very collaborative effort. As Ms. Swasky said, on June 2nd, the National Governors' Association released the final version of the Common Core standards, and this was after several months of open commentary that were allowed on the standards. And, Mr. Hetjung's gonna put up a website for the Common Core standards, and one of the things about this website is it does have a section for voices. And, in the Voices section, you can listen to teachers who did participate in this, and noting that their input was accepted. The Common Core mission is, as I said, to be consistent, clear, understanding what students are expected to learn, so teachers and parents know what they need to do to help them. The standards are designed to be robust, relevant to the real world, reflecting the knowledge skills that our young people need for success in college and careers with American students fully prepared for the future. Our communities will be, be best positioned to compete successfully in the global economy.
Dr. White, could I just ask you to repeat the web address?
The web address is www.corststandards.org. Currently, 34 states and the District of Columbia have adopted these Common Core standards, and I wanted to speak with you briefly about what we're doing here in Santa Barbara with these standards. Okay, one second. I need to switch documents. Okay. We have a kindergarten council that met last year for the first time since I had been on kindergarten council in 1984. And, we looked at the Common Core standards at the draft, and began aligning our curriculum assessments and rubrics to the Common Core. I can give you a couple examples of how that's different from the California standards. For example, in mathematics, in the California standards, the counting was to 30. It's now to 100, and it's also counting by tens to 100. Now, this is different from California in that California, in first grade, you have to count to 1,000, and so, it was quite a jump to go from 30 to 1,000, so it really does make sense to go to at least 100. The sight words have been increased to 36 for the Common Core standards, and California had 24 sight words for kindergarten. You can go through this document and look at the differences, but I think looking at the, the document as a whole, and understanding the way that they've made this a staircase of complexity, and it's very easy to see across the Language Arts section, because it's laid out in a way that you look at kindergarten first and second on one page, and each one of the standards from K-21, 22 is just a, an increase in complexity. So, it's very easy, when we talked about the honors-level courses, about depth and complexity, it's laid out in, in the Common Core standards, different from California, in a way that it's easy to see that. And, as mentioned by Ms. Swasky, we have a copy of the Common Core standards for all elementary school teachers and Language Arts and Math teachers. These standards, we've lent you a copy of them, and you'll notice they're not on terrifically fabulous paper, nor are they well-bound, and there's a reason for that. California has the option, and has taken the option of changing the standards by 15%. And, California has not completely laid out their plan for what they are going to do in the implementation of the standards. So far, I've seen three revisions of the California 15%. So, what our teachers have is the Common Core standards, and I think in looking at what the revisions are in the California version of these standards, which is available on the Sacramento County Office of Education website, is that algebra is quite different, and they are, at this point, recommendations. I'd say other things that I think are interesting to look at in comparing the language between our standards and the Common Core standards. You see things in the California standards, and I'm gonna give you K words for math, like count, compare, recognize, represent, know, use, identify, sort, name, et cetera. In the Common Core standards, you're gonna see things like using mental images, verbal explanations, expressions, equations, decomposing numbers, things that are, have a far more complex level of knowledge and conceptual understanding of mathematics. In some ways, California standards have been very procedural. We're seeing in our elementary math program that we've adopted for the elementary district, the Envision, they, these standards have been worked on for quite a long time, and we see in our math books that same level of conceptual understanding of mathematics beyond the procedural, meaning beyond the adding and subtracting, and really looking at the real world and how it relates to students and mathematics. So, it's, in terms of plan, moving forward, I've already met with the honors-level English Language Arts Committee, and we've talked about the works that are suggested in the Common Core. One of the things that you'll find in the, the books that I did lend to you is that there are three appendices, and the appendices have more information really in them than do the standards, in a way, because it's the works, it's the research, and it's anchor papers, which we've not really had before on a national level. So, that's a brief overview of where we are with the Common Core standards, state standards.
Before we finish, I wanna make sure we describe where we think this is going in terms of how they're reflected on changes in state testing, which will not happen this year, how they're reflected in changes in curriculum, and the adoption of new textbook series, which again, will not happen this year, but we can, we can talk about that later.
Mrs. Parker?
Well, that was one of my questions, and one of my big questions, I guess, but I'll ask that in just a minute. I, I wanted to say, first of all, that I know that in many ways, this has been, you know, multiple decades' conversation. I'm just floored that in, it feels like about 18 months or so, that we suddenly have over 34 states that have signed on to these Common Core standards. It's, it's astounding to me. If anybody had told me even a year ago that we would be changing our standards a year later, I, I would've thought that was just ridiculous, but I, I can't know these, I mean, these standards are so detailed, unless you're like, in, in the middle of the process yourself, I really don't have a position to judge them on beyond what I'm reading about, and, and it certainly sounds impressive, and it sounds like a positive direction, and I'm worried about it too, because I know that, I'm asking, the professional development that's gonna be required for our teachers, the new curriculum that's going to need to be developed, it's, it's huge. I just wanted a couple of, a couple of quick questions. One is, when you talked about the 15% that California, I, I wanna be sure I understand this correctly. I thought that you couldn't change the Core standards, but you can add 15%. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, it's in addition to 15% more than, so California students may be learning 15% more than students in other states, depending on what other states are doing. So, that's correct?
That's correct. And, and looking through the, what has been proposed as recommendations, in the language, first of all, they took the Career Technical Education standards as-is. In the Language Arts, there are additions. They're not significant. They're not significant enough that I would say that it's, it's something to make a big comment upon. I, I believe that they took their 15% add in the area of algebra.
Okay.
And, I cannot comment on that at this point. It's, was released on August 17, and I would defer to the county to have their math specialist make some comments about that before I would bring something to you. I haven't had time to study it.
Okay. And then, the documents, first of all, I, I noticed that you're being very careful about saying that you lent them to us, and I'm wondering if we're in trouble if we marked, if we marked them, but I don't think I marked mine horribly. I, they felt like an overview, and I'm not sure if there's something, like, if you are a kindergarten teacher, you, you referred to 36 sight words versus 24.
Correct.
And I didn't see those sight words listed anywhere. I didn't see the change between like 24 to 36. So, if you're a kindergarten teacher, would you eventually get a different document that explains what exactly they mean in more detail?
I think, you know, what's interesting about this document is that, as you mentioned, that 18 months ago, you would not have expected this. Well, in many ways, this is also a political document. You'll see where the standards are pushed as-is, and then there are statements that pull back on that, and say these are up for the interpretation of teachers. At this point, what we've done for our kindergarten is, is we've taken the open court words in kindergarten, and rather than having 24, we have 36 of them now. So, it's, it's open a bit to interpretation, and we'll see how California actually flushes this out. So, in terms of looking at the standards, from my perspective with teachers at this point, it is to, to look at, how is this different, and how do they go really more into depth and complexity, and how that's laid out, and what that's saying to us? And I think it's important for us to look at the Social Studies and Science, and Career Technical Education pieces, and see really what's the communication from the Common Core about how we're preparing students for their future.
And then, just my last quick question was the big overarching one. Curriculum, professional development.
Curriculum, professional development, new tests, all of that is really going to come from the state. I mean, obviously, we'd need to implement it locally, but we're relying on the state. Does the state have any sort of estimate on a timeline for when they're thinking of rolling curriculum out, curriculum approvals?
Correct. The statement from the Department of Ed at this point is quite vague. Last January, they did appoint a commission for curriculum. And so, that has been constituted, and so, we're awaiting their timeline. And I'm not concerned at all, because I think that these are similar to the California standards in many ways. We're used to working with standards. This is laid out in a way that's very easy to understand. The details are something that are not in our California standards either. They've really been flushed out through the curriculum that's been adopted through the state process. So, I think we're in a very good position to move forward with these Common Core standards because we have been doing so much work with standards.
May I add to that? We expect these to be rolled into very familiar state processes. So, the process, for example, has an overall timeline for the adoption of textbooks, and that timeline is typically a seven-year cycle. It starts with the rollout of the standards in a state framework, which would provide more information on the standards. It goes then to stated, well, it used to be state adoption. It goes to publishers, so the publishers have some time, a year and a half, to work with those and give us potential published materials that are then up for potential adoption by the state. Once the state adopts those materials, then they're rolled out to school districts to take a look at those materials and make adoption decisions, and that all takes about seven years. So, we expect them to publish this in that very familiar format so that these adoption cycles show up. We also expect them to roll this into a new plan for state testing, because that's, testing would normally follow that adoption process. And we're suspecting that they may be rolling the testing ahead, even ahead of state adoptions. Well, gosh, that would be a real position of dissonance. But the state needs to gear up to the new standards, and the state already has the standards. It will nevertheless take state money to write new items to meet those standards. The state doesn't have the money, but we expect a plan for that as well.
Ms. Swasky?
I was going to say, one thing that Dr. White mentioned that I was particularly pleased to see, having done work at the county office before I came here, we took the KC when it came out and tried to backwards map down to second grade and follow the key standards so that students, teachers would be able to focus on it, and it just wound everywhere. In certain grade levels, there weren't standards at that level that went and matched and aligned, and this is completely different. It's very well-aligned. And then, as you know, our report card work with the elementary district, we had a very challenging time, again, doing that kind of work where you could follow from grade level to grade level, and teachers could build on a standard and go deeper and all. So, in that regard, I'm just very pleased to see this improvement with the standards.
Ms. Cordell?
Well, I was wondering, and I think maybe Dr. Sarvas answered a bit of this, but also raised another question, which is, given, I mean, the seven-year process that Dr. Sarvas identified, I'm assuming that the expectation is, we're going to start to implement these new standards sooner than seven years. And so, I'm wondering how that's exactly going to happen. I realize that we maybe don't know yet, as you mentioned, that their guidelines are very vague. So, in those areas where there is some discretion to the, for the, well, I don't, this is my question, for interpretation, at what level is it going to be interpreted? Is it going to be district interpretation? So, for example, we interpret it and apply it the way that we think makes sense? Or are there going to be state interpretations that we are then expected to follow?
I'm very interested to see how this is going to roll out, because as Ms. Parker mentioned, this has been a long discussion, decades of discussion about moving in this direction. I would imagine that the interpretation will come from the state initially. We are accepting the state, the Common Core as they stand, and California is a part of the consortium in building Common Core assessments. And so, whether we will have something like a Common Core assessment, something similar to a NAEP, along with our California tests, is unclear at this point. I believe that that's something that, as we roll it out, we'll keep the board informed as to how California is going to move forward, because I think we will move after California moves. We're, and I say that, at the same time, I've helped to put the standards in everybody's hands so that we can start to look at them and see what really is coming and how we're going to address that.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, almost all my questions have been answered, so that's great. What kind of feedback are you getting from the teachers?
That's an interesting question, because I'm getting different kinds of feedback from different levels of teachers. The high school teachers are concerned about the literature selections. They feel that they're more difficult than what we've seen in our textbooks. We've had, last year, when we worked with the draft in kindergarten, excuse me, there were mixed reviews, some things, it was, wow, we really should have been here before, and in other ways, how are we going to get where we're expected to be? So, I think, once we delve into them, I'll be able to give you a better sense of the feedback. But, yeah, the teachers are talking, and it's kind of an exciting time to be in education because, on the one hand, we're being highly, highly criticized as educators, and then, on the other hand, we're coming out with these exciting things for the future of education.
And I would think, even though our cycle maybe has been seven years in the past, given how quickly these were adopted, we're probably going to be moving much, much more quickly in this.
Yes. In fact, we were just talking. We assume that, as soon as California is settled on their fifteen percent additional standards, those will be our new standards, and our curriculum will be a fill-in-the-gap curriculum. Okay, we're doing these things now, we need to make sure that we're covering these. And then, how quickly that coincides with changes in testing is really very important, and we'll have to be advertising that information as we go along. There's also some talk about states getting together and combining their testing efforts. You know, for textbooks, there are three huge textbook markets in the country. They are California, Texas, and New York. And textbooks are designed around what used to be those state standards. Now, with New York and California with generally similar standards, they will have to make some minor changes for individual states, but for the most part, the textbooks will be much more common across the nation, although Texas may be a standalone market still.
I hope so. Mrs. Parker?
Since you said that, last year, kindergarten teachers were working on the draft Common Core standards, I guess my question is, what are they doing this year? If they, if, this year, are they going to be teaching thirty-six sight words to kindergartners, and are they going to be teaching kindergartners to count to one hundred?
Yes, but we've left our rubrics for proficiency on the California standards, not on the Common Core standards. So, we're working a little bit between the Common Core standards and the California standards, because the expectation will be on the performance for the next grade level from the California standards at this point. But we're ready to go. Our assessments, our rubrics, everything, our agreements for kindergarten are ready to go for the Common Core.
Okay. We've got a speaker?
Yes, we have one public comment. Lane Wheeler.
Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. California Teachers Association, NEA, and, of course, Santa Barbara Teachers Association has always been the forefront of curricular design and the setting of standards. We are concerned, as this moves forward, that currently, there's no mandate, either at the state or federal level, for adoption of these. Oftentimes, that has come, when you have been in the district as long as Stone, as I have. You remember sitting on the committee that designed, took an entire summer to design standards, got to the completion of that process, and only to have the state of California come back in and say, we've done standards for the state, to which we said, well, we better go with those because the textbooks and everything's going to be driven by that. At that point, while it was an interesting educational experience, we ended up accepting and using the California state standards. So, while it's important to be on the leading edge of this, I think it's also important to keep a certain perspective about this that says, we want to make sure that we are leading, but not so far in advance that, if money comes along, that we would not be able to qualify for it. Also, very straightforwardly, these are potentially changing the working conditions, which are bargainable issues. We have an agreement to meet and confer on curricular issues, and I have had one brief conversation with Dr. White today in the hallway about this, and picked up the Core, the Common Core standards, which I may be working out with tonight. And we're anxious to talk about this and discuss this. We do believe this has impact on curriculum and instruction. The kindergarten leadership team, or the kindergarten curriculum team, has been solicited without consultation from the union, and we certainly want to know what the job description is for that, what compensation is for that, and what the responsibilities of that group are. It looks like, with this ACT group, that there'll be a similar one. I may ask you to recall that, I believe it was two years ago, the board chose to end Curriculum Council, and they certainly do like curriculum council items again. So, while this is a good start, we do need to have some conciliation here. We need to spend time working together on this to make sure this moves forward in a proper and cohesive fashion, and we do look forward to working with this. But I would advise caution before we do move, and we certainly hope we'll have a chance to talk with the district about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Any other comments? Dr. Noel?
I think Mr. Wheeler has been very diplomatic. I don't know whether he remembers, but I was on, I had just come on the board when we voted to supersede locally developed standards with the California state standards, and there was a furor at that time. And I, as I listen to this, I keep thinking of statements by Ms. Swasky not long ago, saying, we're still not fully implementing the existing standards. And I just, I wonder, if I were a teacher, I would, and I had, and I sort of had not fully implemented the standards, I would wonder whether I should even try. Why not just go ahead and wait? Or how do you live with this kind of, I shouldn't call it frequent change, but that's a lot of change? It took a long time to get the standards implemented, and now there are changes. I love change, but I think that that may be disruptive for a lot of teachers.
Without getting into a big discussion about it, I think a lot of, in my comment before, a lot of it had to do with training, and when the instructional materials training comes in, and the standards are very clearly analyzed and worked on with teachers, you see clear implementation of it, and you see our achievement rise. A good example is our math scores in the elementary district and the secondary. We had new materials that we adopted, and they are by the current California standards. And full-on training, I mean, literally, every teacher received five days of training over the last few years, and you're seeing our math scores go forward and the standards being addressed. There was training with the original open court, but as we found out later, even with the coaches, there wasn't a complete, you know, not everybody had all that training, and we certainly have teachers in our classrooms that didn't ever have that. So, I believe that the training has a huge piece of it, and I know Mr. Wheeler and I agree with that. We've got to support the teachers in that way. We can't just say, you got to change, and here's some new standards, and we all, Dr. White, we all know that. So, I agree, we need to move with caution and be a partner with the teachers and figure out what they need to be able to implement it.
Let's go ahead with F five, the 5,000 series.
Okay, we do have, these are, this is a group of, we have the 5,000s first, that are, as we've seen in the past, revised, in some cases, replaced, deleted, and a new one, in some cases, that are based on what we get from the California School Boards Association. These are actually from March, and a couple slipped in from July, and we will have a few more that we're still working on with some of our, we're working with Mr. Price on a couple of them, you'll see later. So, I don't know if you have questions, I don't know how you'd like to do this. We've been trying to use the summary of the changes in there so that it can be very helpful for you to find those. I'm here to answer any questions. I have them marked in my sheets where the changes are, if you couldn't find it. Some of them are very subtle.
Right off the bat, I'd like, on page one, the graduate, now says, the graduation ceremony shall include recognition of valedictorian and salutatorian. The old one says, may. Why the change from shall to, from may to shall?
Oh, interesting. I didn't even catch that.
On honors and awards, page one.
Okay, okay. Shall include recognition. Okay, and the other one said, may. We can change that back.
I just wondered if there's a reason for it.
I, that was not, that was probably, the CSBA version said, shall. We have been, as you know, trying to adopt and get closer to those. If the board can always, though, change, we try to catch those things that are larger that we see that our board has changed. That we didn't catch, so it's whatever the board.
I actually, I think maybe all of us noticed that, but to my knowledge, some of our high schools do not have valedictorians, and this almost mandates it by saying, shall, so I would like to.
May would be that, I agree.
I would like to revert to may.
And why did we leave out elementary, middle school promotion exercises?
That is a CSBA recommendation, and it was part of the change that came with it. So, it's just a recommendation to put that so that it's not a part of the graduation ceremonies. They wanted to make it clear that it's graduation. It does not mean that you don't, you can't have a promotion ceremony, and again, we can add that back in if the board wants to do that.
Mrs. Cordell?
So, would we have a separate policy, then, board policy regarding promotions?
No, we do have a board policy that talks about the units that you have to have to be transferred and promoted on, but that's in a different section. That's the required. It's not about the ceremony.
Right. So, if we wanted to adhere to the CSBA suggestion that it really focused on graduation as opposed to promotion, if we wanted to maintain this policy so that it is focused on just graduation, my question is, then, would we need to have, or would we want to have, a separate policy that focuses on elementary and middle school promotions?
Personally, I wouldn't recommend a whole policy just on elementary promotion. It could certainly be a paragraph again, like we had in the other one, if the board wants to include that.
Where would you put it?
I would look to see on, and I don't, I'd have to look back here, it would be in this, graduation ceremonies and activities. That's where we had it before.
Oh, yeah, so you put it back in there?
I would put it back in there, yes. There's no law against it, it's just the CSBA.
My other, oh, my other question had to do with the elimination of the prescribed dress section. We had spent a lot of time debating whether students would be allowed to wear military uniforms.
Exactly.
And that was taken out of the policy.
Not still there?
Is it still there? I'm sorry.
That's the part that actually came back in.
It's a little different wording, but it's there.
This is the CSBA version. We, you know, jumped ahead and put ours in. It's on the.
Oh, I see it now. I'm sorry, I did skip over it.
And it has the ed code.
Yes. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
My only comment on BP 5127 about the elementary and middle school promotion exercises, I'm fine with that going back in just so that schools have a reference, but instead of the board desires, I think it might be preferable to have each elementary and middle school may provide age-appropriate promotion exercises.
Okay, and that is located.
It's on, it's on crossed off page.
Yeah, I know it's crossed off.
Two of two.
Oh, there we go. Okay. So each elementary, "may," okay.
And middle school.
Yes. We'll just say each, yeah, we'll just start with each elementary and, okay.
Okay.
We'll add.
So going back to page one and thereafter, anybody have comments that they'd like to make on any other pages in that section? Mrs. Parker?
Sorry, are we talking about 5127?
No, just anything.
In particular, any others?
Just page one through fifty, one through 51.
I have two.
Where are your hot buttons?
Two, one on page 38, which was the board policy on non-discrimination and harassment and the grievance procedure. I just noted that there are multiple people that a student can go to or a school employee who observes an incident and it particularly says, "You can go to the coordinator or the principal or any other staff member," but I want to be sure that there is protocol in here that this coordinator always get, if a principal gets this information, that that information gets passed on to the coordinator so that it's never isolated, so that there's always somebody at the district office that can see the big picture. And so I would suggest adding a sentence in there about information gathered at the site level will be passed on to the district coordinator. And then my other section was on page 40, which is the lovely exhibit. I assume that it was Ms. Kiani that put this together. Exhibit 5145.6.
I'm sorry, can I just?
Oh, you want to piggyback on that button?
Yeah, because the section that you were looking at on grievance procedure, I had a question about two, but I wondered if we needed to have something that identifies what the person will do with the investigation. It says, "Upon receiving a complaint of discrimination or harassment, the coordinator shall immediately investigate the complaint." But then I don't, it doesn't say what's going to happen with the investigation.
With, in accordance with the site level, I guess. Would you like me to look at, I don't have it in front of me right now, but this grievance, the AR 5145.7.
Would outline what those procedures would be because I want, well, maybe that's enough, but I just wondered if we needed to have something that identified that the investigation, there would be some.
Why don't you look at, review 5145.7?
I'll look at this, see if there's some way we can, yeah.
See if anything needs to be added.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
My other one was on page, was on the exhibit 5145.6, pages 40, well, it's through 51 actually. And in this list, which I just so appreciated having everything put together in this way, the parental notifications, one thing that I saw was missing, which I was particularly thinking about because it just come up, is the annual letter that we asked, starting in 2007, to go out to parents regarding the solicitation of funds from and by students.
Yes.
And so it is BP 1321 needs to fit in here. We actually, in that board policy, specifically asked it to not be part of the annual packet because I think we wanted to be sure the parents got it separately and it drew attention to it. With three kids in the system, myself, I've realized that if it doesn't come as part of the annual notification, I really, I'm not going to see it. And that is the time when I, when I sit down and look at everything. And so I kind of question whether we should go back and address the timing in the language of BP 1321.
Okay, and we will look at that and see about putting it in here. I do want to follow up also on that. We're checking with the schools to see those forms because I know we're looking, the form was not in here, of course, and we're looking, we know that some schools do send one and Esther Caesar is looking for that. So we'll follow up.
Dr. Noel, any comments on one through 51?
Nope.
Can we actually skip ahead? I had one on.
Okay, any comments, I would ask Mrs. Parker and Dr. Noel?
Well, I have comments on 5127, but whenever we get to that.
What page is that?
That's a page.
I'm sorry, between, any pages?
I beg your pardon, I started the wrong number. 5131.7.
On page three.
Page three.
And what is your comment?
Oh, page three.
Well, it's, it's a comment on page three and page four on the backside. I just don't understand this permission to bring a firearm on campus for weapons. And then I read, I read over here, two and a half, three paragraphs of conditions under which permission may be granted and I can't, I shake my head in dismay. Why, why one would, if there's a need to have firearms or weapons on campus for educational purposes, a student, it would not be a student who desires to possess a firearm, imitation firearm and so on. It would be the faculty who have decided that there's, there's a lesson that they want to convey. I just, this, this is very strange to me. And then, and the other comment is simply then it talks about possession of pepper spray and I would think, I would think that that belongs over under possession of weapons and simply included, included as another kind of weapon.
And where, oh, I see, yes, the separate.
But I don't, can someone explain to me what this is, well, permission to bring guns?
My guess would be.
Because it sounds like the CSBA, I don't think anybody here wrote that.
No, no, of course, we follow the CSBA, but it, with the ed code following it.
Maybe we can quit paying them all their dues.
With the ed code following it, it looks to me, and I didn't go check it in our ed code book or, you know, online, it could be, a lot of times it's exact wording almost. And so we'll need to check, you know.
Will you check that one?
I will check.
You know, I think anybody who read this pondered that, but I seem to remember some Civil War muskets, you know, at some point.
But that's, that's an instructional decision. That's not, that doesn't say, "If a student desires to bring, a student who desires to possess a firearm, imitation firearm, or other prohibited weapon on school grounds for an educational purpose shall request permission."
But it might be, it might be a show and tell. It might, well, no.
Or a report, something.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's how I read it, that it would be.
Yeah, I also wondered if it was ROTC related, if there are, you know, for schools that have programs like that where there are imitation firearms, that that might be something. But I completely see your point. I mean, it's, especially when it's student led, I mean, you could see it as maybe a teacher question to come forward, but not necessarily a student led.
No, I agree. I had the same thoughts when I read it.
I think in one of my son's high school classes, there was a fencing demonstration once. I mean, I was, I was, my mind was kind of thinking about where you might possibly justifiably bring weapons and there may be some rarex.
I want to bring those weapons for educational purposes because I want to teach my friends about it.
Or about history.
I mean, this is very ambiguous.
About history, yeah.
I will check on the ed code wording for sure.
Okay. Mrs. Cardell?
Yes.
Well, just a quick comment on that and then I have one more that I want to look at. But it's kind of similar. I also had this question of why would anybody want to, why would a student be asking to bring a weapon on campus? But in looking at the language here, I felt that the language was fairly restrictive. So just because a student says, "I want to bring it on campus," doesn't mean they're going to be granted permission to do it. That would be, the principal would have to determine why the student is bringing it and would have to grant the permission to do so. So, I mean, we would assume that the principal would have the expertise, the professional expertise and judgment to be able to identify whether there was a logical and valid educational reason to do that and if not, would deny the request.
We could potentially link it to a classroom and, you know, working with the teacher and, I mean, there could be some, possibly some language added that really ties it to instruction and curriculum.
My, my other question had to do, and in some way similar, which is sort of why would this happen, is on page 33, it's questioning an apprehension by law enforcement and it's one, two, three, third paragraph down.
That is the change actually that was put in based on the CSBA.
And I had a question. "When any law enforcement official requests an interview with a student, the principal or designee shall request that the official provide verification of his or her identity and official capacity and certify the legal authority under which the interview is being conducted. If the officer refuses to provide certification of the legal authority for the interview, the principal or designee shall document such refusal and should consult with district legal counsel as appropriate before allowing the interview to proceed." So I guess my question is, under what's, why would a, why would a law enforcement personnel refuse to provide authors, or certification that they're authorized in this capacity if they're identifying themselves for purposes of, I could see if they were maybe undercover or something, but they're identifying themselves already for purposes of interviewing the student, why would they then not provide any authorization that they are in fact, you know, legally authorized to do this?
It just says if they don't, for whatever reason, if they don't.
Yeah, I can't imagine it actually happening, but.
I felt like that was covering the base for the, a principal who may suddenly be faced with the situation where an officer of the law is saying, "I'm not going to provide any documentation and if you give me any trouble, then I'm going to pull in reinforcements and arrest you," or something.
I don't know.
Or somebody that represents themselves as an officer of the law.
I wish that we could say, and I don't know if this is legally allowable, but I would like to be able to say, "If they don't provide the authorization, we don't let them interview the student."
Well, it says, "Before allowing the interview to proceed."
Well, it says, yeah, but it says, what it says they will do is consult legal counsel before allowing the interview to proceed.
Right, so, but that's, I think that's it. You can't interview until I get an authority to let you interview.
So maybe should should be changed?
Can I give an example?
Oh, that would be great, thank you.
I know that, you know, in my previous job, there were instances, especially with Child Protective Services, where police would show up and the principal or someone like that would not want to allow the prince, the officer to interview the child, but the officer would say that, you know, they had the right to do so and they may not actually provide the documentation because they had reasons for not. So there are circumstances where this can occur. I just know that for having worked.
So you're saying that there are sometimes some valid reasons why a law enforcement personnel would not provide evidence that they are in fact a law enforcement?
They would provide evidence they're law enforcement, but they may not provide documentation as to why they're there.
Oh.
And there are reasons for that that I've ran into. Rare.
Well, my question is on that line, could we change it to, just get rid of the "should"?
And consult.
So the, the principal or designee shall document such refusal and consult with district legal counsel as appropriate before allowing the interview to proceed.
Does that work?
That's great, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Deacon?
I'm sorry, I forgot. On page eight, this is back on tuberculosis testing, I mean, I understand and they cite, you know, health and safety code here about if people decline to be tested for TB, which makes me actually, I have a little bit of problems with that because TB is not always real evident, but, and I guess other immunizations are required in advance of starting school and this is testing, I know not an immunization, but it says if they're, I'm under 2A, the second paragraph, if there is probable cause to believe a student has active TB, how do our nurse, how does our nursing staff determine probable, I mean, what would indicate probable cause? Is it just a hunch, a discussion, but with a teacher or a parent?
I'm sure a nurse would answer differently than I, I mean, I would have to check with them exactly. I'm sure they have a checklist. I mean, the cough, I mean, there's certain things that, that, and there could be knowing that someone in their family has active TB. I mean, there's probably a whole list of ways that a nurse would answer and I, I don't have that.
I would guess it'd be ill with symptoms.
Because by then you're already pretty contagious.
Exactly.
Yes. Scary, isn't it?
Any other comments, one through 51? Okay, let's go to F6. And there's eight, nine pages, so.
Yes, and you'll notice that the only one that came as a change from CSBA are the first two on the physical education and activity. I will note, and you probably found this, when you looked at the reason for changing, on the board policy, it says that it establishes expectations that 50% of our PE class time will be spent in moderate, moderate to vigorous physical activity. And then in the AR, it describes what those are. In our BP, we talked about that and didn't put that in and I kind of wanted, but, but the descriptions in the AR, so it seems a little bit inconsistent to me. So I, I think the question is to the board, we can certainly add that piece. It's not in there right now. It would go right in the, the first paragraph of the board policy.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sawaski, I think I misunderstood what you were.
Okay. I'm talking about the first, the first two, the, yes, in the BP, it, on the second page where it says the summary of changes, the, after the board agenda item, it, oh, talks about the changes in the board policy establish the expectation that 50% of our PE time will be spent in moderate to vigorous physical activity. That was left out of the BP and in the AR, it describes what those activities look like. So my suggestion is we either add it into the BP that 50% will be spent on moderate to vigorous, or we take out those descriptions in the AR if we don't want to have that. I'm fine with adding the, I think our students should be moving and I would suggest the 50%.
I believe, as part of the wellness policies, we've worked to get those in there.
Yes.
Okay.
So we will add that and it will go right under the first paragraph or where it's appropriate in the BP.
We can put this off to next week and if there's a lot of comments on this section, if there are.
It's so short, I can't imagine.
Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't, that's my presumption too, but.
Yeah, I hope not.
And the other two after that are, those were staff, the school-sponsored trips. You can see there was just slight wording that.
What page are you talking about?
On this, well, I don't know if you want to address anything in PE first and then I can talk about the others. Why don't we do it that way if that makes sense?
I think we agree with what you talked about PE.
In PE? Anything else in the PE? Yes, we do have.
Oh, Mrs. Parker?
Yes, for me, on AR 6142.7.
What page?
Page seven, where there's a list of physical activity and then it goes daily recess, integrating physical activity. After the daily recess line, there is one thing that got dropped off from the old AR that I would like to add back in again and here it is. I, it didn't have a section title before, but to make it consistent, I would add one that says, "Discipline" in bold and then.
Let's see, in that, where does that line? I'm looking on page three or four.
I would look at, on page seven, yeah, page three or four. Under the paragraph that says, "Daily recess," but before the paragraph that says, "Integrating physical activity," I would add a new paragraph with the title, "Discipline." And then under that, I would pull the language from the old AR and write, "Teachers and other school and community personnel will not use physical activity, e.g. running laps, push-ups, or withhold opportunities for physical activity, e.g. recess, physical education as punishment."
And that's on page two of four. And that's on page two of four, the old one, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, let me just highlight that so I don't lose it.
Dr. Noel?
Yeah, I'm on page one for BP sixty-one forty-two point seven. In the first paragraph, it says physical, it restrict, it adds throughout the school day. See that line? "May provide additional opportunities for physical activity throughout the school day." I, I don't see why it says that, why not just physical activity, period? Leaving open the option of adding them before school and after school as well. That's one, one reaction, one thought.
A period after act, physical activity?
Period after activity.
Sure.
And then in the paragraph one, two, three, four, "Student participation in other courses", in the second sentence, "Students shall be required", I, I, I think that ought to be, that ought to be softened a little bit and said, you know, so I come up with generally, "Students will be required." So it allows a little bit of flexibility from the "shall."
I believe that's a requirement. Actually, I'm surprised, I'm wondering if...
Well, I, I...
Everything I remember is that in ninth grade, you do have to take PE.
The, the, well, but then, but then the issue was substitution of other classes.
I, I think that maybe instead of saying PE, it should be spelled out as physical education, because there's a sense, when you see the word PE, you think of the PE class, but it implies, I mean, it means marching band, theater arts dance, drill flag team.
So, physical education, lowercase.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Then, then on page two, I have, under staffing, "Physical education instruction shall be delivered by appropriately credentialed teachers who may be assisted by instructional aides, paraprofessionals, and/or volunteers." And does, do we have anywhere some criteria, some standards about those people? You know, what constitutes fitness to perform those jobs?
Specifically...
Quality, training, quality control?
Specifically for physical education or any...
For paraprofessionals and/or volunteers in physical education or physical activities.
Not specifically for physical education?
Because I, I, it seems to me we, I could think of at least one, maybe two cases where we've had some problems from a lack of standardized, professionalized conduct on the part of some people who would fall into those categories.
Would you want to add appropriately trained or...
I would just, I would simply ask you to come up with something.
Okay.
Think it through and...
Sure.
But it seems to me it is a problem, and that we want some, we want some assurance that we're not having just people walk on there who are emotionally or in some other way ill-suited to be dealing with young people.
Well, aren't, some of these people are fingerprinted too. I mean, isn't there, there's already, there's fingerprinting already going on, but...
Certainly...
This may be a different level.
TB testing and the fingerprinting and all that.
Right, the only fingerprinting that wouldn't happen is for a volunteer that is with a student, under the supervision of a credentialed teacher.
Well, I'm thinking of a case that involves sexual harassment.
Oh, okay.
Known to aides and/or paraprofessionals. And it's just totally unacceptable. What you do to prevent that, yes, you could say, well, it's a matter of supervision. I'm asking for some, some thoughts and suggestions about going a little farther, and making sure we get people who are trained and sensitized to the relevant issues.
Trained, yes, with...
Do we have more? On the one change in, on page nine, talking about out of state, out of country, overnight travel, it says, in, in, it's the second paragraph, "Submitted to the superintendent or designee", that the request should be submitted. Is it a request approved by the principal submitted to the superintendent? Or does a request go from the person asking for it directly to the superintendent?
The principal has to sign all those forms, so put it in there.
Could we say, you know, approved by the principal and submitted? And then the other question, further on, where you've added, any other kind of travel approved in advance by the principal, and then you've added, "and submitted to the superintendent", is that "and submitted" for their approval, or submitted for information?
No, submitted so that we have track of where every kid is. It's really insurance and just supervision. What was happening before is if, if they didn't meet this out of state, out of country, and overnight, they could be traveling down to Los Angeles for the day, and I wouldn't know about it. And so we just want to make sure we have a record in my office.
It's not to approve it, it's not to look at and say, "I don't think they should be doing this."
No.
Okay.
I thought you were going to slip in advance.
Okay, okay. Let's go now back to one item D twelve, I think it was. Dr. Noel, purchase order. Purchase order.
This, the first one's a little one, Lincoln Equipment Company, ten thousand dollars, asset for pools. It talks about using general civic center money, and I don't really understand what general civic center money is. I have, I understand what specific civic center money is.
Our civic center fees for pools generate a, a deal of money from income, and with the board cutting back the maintenance budget by one point two million, we asked Mr. Smith if we could use some of that income from the after-school users of pools to help offset the cost of chemicals, which is significant.
All right, that's what I thought it meant.
And so that's...
Here's my problem. My problem is, if we're, if it's money generated by the use of an elementary school auditorium, I hate to see it go for a high school swimming pool.
The, the swimming pools generate fees in excess of what we're using on chemicals.
Okay, that, that helps, that solves. Then the next one. What is Fund Forty?
If I may?
Mr. Smith?
Fund Forty is where we placed the matching funds for the career technical education building being built at Dos Pueblos High School. We didn't want to put it in Fund O one, because it would increase the reserve requirement.
No problem. I, I understand completely. And the IB, the IB North America, the ten thousand dollars diploma fees, Fund Thirty-one, general. That's, is that what I think it means, general fund? So we pay that out of the district general fund? Or does that come out of something that is allocated to the campus?
I didn't initiate that, but it looks like it comes right out of the general fund. But I could do some research on that.
See, I, the reason I ask is, but I thought that we had gotten to a point where the IB program was district revenue neutral.
Yes. That was our expectation, that we do not at this point pay for testing or diplomas in the school pays for that.
But that wouldn't distinguish, you know, we don't break it down to a site level, so it could be coming from the general fund from Dos Pueblos's allocation rather than the district office. I mean, we don't break down to that level of specificity.
In fairness to the other schools, I think we want to make sure that's, that works, that it is done that way.
Okay.
We'll go back and make this clear.
Hey, that's all I had on, on D twelve.
I move to reapprove D twelve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Apposed, motion carried unanimously. Coming events. Anything further?
The board, we have a meeting again next Tuesday. We have a special board meeting on September third at nine o'clock.
On that, before that workshop, you'll get the results of the board survey. It's being tabulated now, the first tabulation didn't go right. It went right, but reported wrong, so it's being redone. But when you get it, when, I'm going to be gone for the next week, but when you get it, just, I'd like each to take five or six questions that you really think are things you want to talk about, and let Mimi know. So we'll end up with a list of fifteen or twenty questions that are top priority, we can focus on immediately in the workshop. So when you get to, get it, look at it, let Mimi know five or six items that you really think are worthy of discussion. We will also have the focus book goals back on that agenda, too. Future agenda items. Dr. Noel?
Sooner rather than later.
Part of that would be a review of the different surveys that have been taking place that have the answer to the question about bullying as far as the status of bullying, and just in general.
I guess I'm making an assumption that it is a problem. And what I want to hear is discussions of how we...
What are we doing?
What are we doing about it? How do we, if we can't eliminate it, at least minimize it?
And Dr. No, Noel, do you want, would you like that to be a K two, I saw, I thought, yes. Secondary, right. I already had that down on my list.
And, and maybe with some special attention to PE classes,
Coaching and PE.
Where I've heard that it's a venue for a lot of it at the, especially in junior high school.
I had that on my list to meet with principals already.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
A couple of things. One is that I think in our last board brief, we had some information about monitored fire alarms. And I don't know if there's a plan already in place for us to, to bring that forward to the board. It's such a fairly low-cost item, and I, and I feel like it's so critical, especially given what happened at Cleveland School. I would really like us to talk about funding that. And the second item is WASC. And I don't know if there's a plan already in place for us to talk about the WASC reports at the three high schools, but I'd like to get that on agenda.
And I read in the paper today that the state's going to stop sending us money. If that's a problem, are you going to let us know, I presume?
Yeah, I, I mean, it'll be a cash flow issue more than anything else.
Is that it? Adjournment?